Okay, for those of you watching on our telecast here, we have called to order. We've had the invocation by Commissioner Chesney, followed by the pledges. In addition, I've certified that there's a quorum. And at this time, we are proceeding into this public hearing, which is a, we have noticed this public hearing. And I would ask, Deputy, would you mind bringing forward any public comment roster board that's there? It's empty. Okay. And I'll ask once more if there's anyone in the audience that wishes at this time to sign up for public comment with regards to the public hearing on the proposed tax Hearing none, I'll move on to number three and ask that Dale lead us here at this time.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good morning, Your Honor. Good morning, Commissioners. This is our first public hearing in compliance with the tax code, 26 on the tax code, as well as our local government code, section 110, or excuse, 140. We are required by law to present a public hearing to determine our proposed tax rate, because our proposed tax rate is above the effective rate. I've prepared a slide presentation, and we'll go through this slowly so we can make sure we have the proper amounts. So we'll begin on what we plan to discuss today. We plan to discuss the proposed tax rate, the proposed value exemptions, which y'all will be asked to take action on during our regular voted amount. And these are where we have a 20% on the valuation, as well as some other exemptions, and we'll get to that in a little bit. We have the exemptions of the other entities of this, and we only picked one entity for the school districts because of their numerous school districts within the county. We picked the largest one, so this might be slightly different on some of the other school district entities, but we use the CCISD for this particular item. We have several line graphs and bar charts showing our historical tax rate, as well as our tax revenue. And then we go through the process of telling you where are the sources of revenue come from the county and where they are, how they're bringing into the county, as well as then we do the, how we spend the money by function of government, and we'll bring you those functions of government very soon. And the last one would be our future financial impact based on laws that were passed and other accounting issues that we might have. And we'll begin if y'all are ready. The first one is what do we plan to propose and what do the proposals include? We plan to maintain the same tax rate as the prior year, and that tax rate is 0.313088 per $100 valuation for the county. This represents an increase of .014101 per $100 valuation above the effective rate, or a 6.29% above the effective rate calculation.
Dale, can I ask you real quick?
Certainly.
When I got this proposal, I was a little confused, because you had originally recommended a different budget to...
This is the ceiling.
Okay, so you're doing this on the ce, okay, I'm sorry, I got you. So this is the ceiling max budget. This isn't your recommendation necessarily. You're staying with yours, but, okay, all right.
This is the ceiling that we proposed to, we can definitely go lower than this, but this is as high as we can go, which is a tax ceiling, and our tax ceiling is at the same tax rate.
Just want to be clear, thank you.
We're proposing keeping the hospital district at the current effective rate calculation, and that calculation is .011, I mean, .112421 per $100 valuation. So if you combine the two, the county and the hospital district, the tax rate will be 0.425509 per $100 valuation, if we use the proposed tax rate for the county, as well as proposed tax rate for the hospital district. Now this slide is where we're going to have, where we'll discuss later on what the county is going to propose for exemptions for homesteads.
Excuse me, do you want to just clarify that the hospital district proposed rate is the effective rate?
That's what I did, yes.
Okay. So that would be lower than...
Lower than, than...
Than the previous year.
Previous year, yes.
Just for clarification.
We'll get, we'll show you that when we get to the line chart and bar chart. What we're proposing to do, the Commissioners' Court, would be continue to provide an over-65 and disability tax exemption of $62,500 for the county and for the hospital district homestead values. We're proposing to continue to provide a homestead tax exemption for the county of 20% of the home value, with a minimum of $5,000 on values of property in the county, as well as the hospital district for homestead values. And then we're also going to continue to provide a cap on the tax levy for over-65 and the disabled homestead within Nueces County, and that's what our proposal is for, to maintain our current exemptions for that. The next kind of shows you a breakdown between the exemptions offered by our county, as well as other entities in the county. And as I said before, we picked the largest school district, which was CCISD. Some of the other school districts may be a little bit different from this, but this is the one we used. As you see, the county is a 20% of homestead value, with a $5,000 minimum. Over-65 is a $62,500 exemption, and the disabled is a $62,500 exemption. For the city of Corpus Christi, they offer a 10% homestead value exemption with a minimum, also a $5,000. Their over-65 is $50,000, and their disabled exemption is $50,000. For CCISD, the homestead exemption is $25,000 of value, with over-65 being $60,000, as well as disabled being $60,000. Delmar, our junior college district, has a homestead value exemption of $5,000, with over-60,000 being $50,000, as well as disabled being a $50,000 exemption. The hospital district is the same as the county's proposal, at 20% of the value, with a minimum, with a home over-65 of $62,500, and a disabled tax exemption of $62,500. And that is the exemptions offered by the county, as well as the others within the counties. Now, we're going to show you kind of the historical rate of where we are. Now, this is the Nueces County general fund rate, and you'll see that the line graph is how we start back in 2004. We were at .43, and as you see, it's kind of going, it's been going down, and we had a little bit of an increase last year because of some stuff we needed, but we're going back down. And for this particular item, we're proposing the same rate of .313088 for the value. And you see how the line graph is going down for our tax rate. And this is just for the Nueces County tax rate. This is the hospital district tax rate. They started back in 2004 at .225, and they've gone down. And similar with us in 2010, 2011, is when the homestead, all the balances we had for homesteads really dropped down in value, so we both had increases. That's why you saw an increase. But as you see, from 2013 to current, we've been using the effective rate, and we currently continue to use the effective rate, which is the .1124 that we mentioned earlier.
Hey Dale, can you pause this for a second and go back to the Nueces County tax rate one?
Yeah.
Okay, so, either I'm reading this wrong, but, okay, so, last year's tax...
There was a slight error that we used, this didn't get updated correctly, and so the one last year was using the proposed rate and not the adopted rate, so that should be a straight line.
Okay, that was my question. Okay, so that should be .31...
That should be .313, yes.
Gotcha.
And that will be corrected for the next hearing, yes.
Okay, thank you. Darn. I was hoping that was right.
Just so you know, I say nothing. I loved that slide.
Go ahead.
This one is going to be the combined tax rate for the county and the hospital district combined, showing back in 2004, 2005, we're at .655, and as we're going down through the cycle, we're now proposing at .42, which is a decrease in the tax rate from the previous year in overall.
And leave that one up just for a moment, because that one is very significant for everybody to understand. How we got there was because of the hospital district being able to use the effective.
That's correct.
By using the effective, they're still going to be gaining half a million dollars in revenue, in addition to what they brought in last year. Of course, this is due to our 8% growth, but what is very exciting is that because of their strong fiscal, their balance sheet showing no debt and 70-plus million dollars in cash, we're able to hold, propose that they hold steady, we're able to therefore increase our value by holding the same tax rate, but it is 6% above the effective. But when you combine the two, which we should do, because that's who we are, Nueces County, you can see that we're able to do more with less. This is my number-one slide for TAC in two weeks, and I want us to actually appreciate it, because I know, Commissioner Chesney, that means a lot to you, to what you can tell your constituents. It is a maneuvering, if you will. It just shows you when you can prioritize where you need to go more, but pull back where you don't, you can create a combined rate that's lower than last year. It's really, this is my, this is a home run.
And Judge, I think it's a, I think you're right in a lot of ways, not to say that's what I'm going to do, but I'm just saying, I, what I think, and I think this court should be applauded also, because we've continued, you know, to see, I don't know when Commissioner Gonzalez came on, since he's our senior member, but since he's been on, you've continued to see doing less with more for this county, you know, and maybe sometimes it hasn't been exactly the less with more that we should have done, but I think the taxpayers would be very happy to see a slide like this, considering 2004, 2005, it was .655, and it's now at .426. And I would venture to bet there's not too many entities around here that it's going down. I think most is going up, so this is a positive slide.
I just know that you're very interested in this, and I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
And also, I'm hoping that everybody at home can follow along. Sometimes we forget, we move so fast, we forget there's people that are watching us, and so I wanted to make that distinction. I think the legislature spoke loud and clear, and this is an effort to hear them and heed their warning, and that's why we have revenue caps next year. But this should at least please those leaders, the governor, the lieutenant governor, and the speaker, who really urged communities to be sensitive to property, tax owners. I think Nueces County has done this with this proposal.
However it goes, there's no question, and I appreciate that effort, and my hope is that maybe we can even get that first slide to where it shows a little downward, even if it's not a great downward, but a little downward trend, because that's kind of what I'm looking for, just for whatever that's worth. But I think y'all have done great work. And I'll say again, Dale, this is thus far, this has been the best budget presentation that I've been in part of. This is my fourth one, or fifth one, I think, so thank you for that.
We got a lot of help from my staff, as well as others.
I know the judge's staff, I know everybody's worked real hard on this, you guys.
This is your...
This is your deal.
It's you, Dale, it's you, and it's super appreciated, because it's easy to follow.
It really, it really is.
So thank you.
And I mean, it's easy to dig into. I mean, you can look at the surface stuff, but it's the way you've got the whole book arranged and everything, it's really made it a lot easier for me to do it as well, so thank you.
And just remember, of the top 25 counties, per Estrada Inojosa's latest overview that they provided back in June, we're about, and again, top 25 counties by population, we sit about number 13 in our tax rate. So we're right there in the middle. This might, this might change it ever so slightly favorable, but it's good for us to know and recognize that we are neither the highest, that'd be Harris County, nor are we the lowest in our population, which is really, it's important to understand where you sit, so that you can make good policy.
Now, just to continue on, as we said, this is our historical tax rate, as we saw, we're going down with a small little increase in 2010, as we talked, the housing market kind of had that little crash that we had, and the values went down significantly. That's why you have that little increase there, but we have going down in the last few, the last four years, we hear is showing a decrease. The next slide is just going to show you a combined tax revenue. This includes the general fund, the foreigner market lateral road, as well as our debt service, showing the amount of income we bring in from tax revenue. And back in 2010 through 2011, the combined taxable revenue was $62 million, and in 2019, 2020, if the proposed budget is adopted, it'll be $93 million as of the tax revenue as collected. Again, this includes all three entities, the road fund, the tax, the general fund, as well as the debt service. The next one kind of shows you what our general fund balances are for the fiscal year. Back in 2014, we had a $22.5 million balance on our general fund fund balance, with our target, and that target balance is the black line with the dash, black line. So our target value, which is 25% of our general fund revenue, including transfers, was right at 19.4, and you see a slight little decrease in 2017, and that does seem like it went down significantly, but there was a few reasons for that, and the biggest reason was we required to purchase a lot of the equipment that we needed to have in the county at the very end of the fiscal year, and we got it reimbursed from the issuance that we did to pay for this balance in the next fiscal year. And as you see, we started back increase in 2018, as well as 2019. We're still not quite at the $2,000, at the 25% budget, target value, but we're very, very close. We're right about $900,000, give or take a little bit, based on our estimated values. So we continue to improve that, and if the budget holds the way we're proposing right now, that will show a continuing increase on fund balance. The next balance we show you, what we did, we valued what the average, the average value of the house, the average value of our house, according to our tax appraisal value, is $136,434. That's the average house value within Nueces County. Last year, it was $132,966, so it's only a small, slightly increase of a little over $3,000. Last year, on the tax rate we were proposing, the last year, the adopted tax rate of .430760, the total tax levy was $572.76 for both the county and the hospital district. On a proposed tax rate of .425509, which is the proposed ceiling rate we're having now at the new value, the proposed tax levy will be $580.54, or an increase of $7.74 on the average homestead value, with $3.08 decrease in the hospital district and a $10.86 increase in the county. Excuse me. Do we have any questions on this slide?
No, but I got a question on the one before that.
Okay.
We said, we always wanted to get to 25%, right? But you said we were short $900,000.
Around $900,000, yes.
But that means if we don't get that, we'd be at 22.4?
Right now, our target value is 23.5, and we're at 22.4.
So you're projecting we're going to get to maybe 23? Is that the black line there?
The black line is the target of last year's, of last year's revenue, correct. 23.5 is the target. And right now, with the estimated actuals, our fund balance is 22.4. Until we get the actual numbers in, that number can go up and down slightly, but we've been very good on our estimated actuals in the past, so we should be relatively close to that.
You're talking about maybe $900,000 to $1 million?
Right now, the difference between our target value and our estimated fund balance, we're right about $900,000 difference, yes.
So we say short, right?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Dale and I have talked about this a lot, and I've told him, anything I do, he has permission to reel back in, because to me, the fund balance increasing is the most important priority, one of the most important priorities for our county. We're going to get rated again, and we want to be ready for the rating agencies to see that we have made a market improvement in our fund balance.
And if the numbers hold, we can definitely tell them that'll be almost $3 million increase in fund balance.
So I think they're really going to like that, in addition to other, the other good markers that we see economically in our region, but we know that they look at that, so...
I have one more question now.
Sure.
I'm sorry. If, say for instance, we go over everything we have that we project and we need, right? Will this go lower than that?
Will the funding bounce go lower in the budget or actual?
Well, actual budget, do we, at the end of the day, say we're going to go with everything that we need that's here and you're, and say it's $8 million or $9 million?
Rough, rough, rough estimates value if we do what's been proposed, and we do what's been requested and proposed, that will be coming up, and we have workshop later to discuss a few items, to make sure my final proposal to y'all would be including the right numbers. If we use the proposed rate, and the estimates are true to the fact, as history goes, 100% of revenue and around 94%, 95% of expenses, we would see anywhere between $500,000 to $900,000 increase in fund balance. Now, that is increasing our fund balance, however, because we are increasing our revenue by a large amount, now that gap gets higher, because our target gets higher.
We could be lower than 22.
No, if everything holds right, and our balances are right, we'd be closer to 23, 24. But our target will be higher.
This coming fiscal year, anywhere between $500,000 and $900,000 are the projections. Of course, 100 million things can affect your fund balance, you know, both positive and negative, but it is more likely than not that the trends will continue, and that's the marker that we're looking at. And if you really wanted to be conservative, take that $500,000 number, because it's probably, you know, you should always think to yourself, what the conservative, but again, that's running a 95% budget. We typically run somewhere between 94 and 96.
95.
Yeah, 93 is the normal.
Depending on how, like I said, depending on the expenses, and as long as we don't have any major activity or major expenses that we have to account for.
Correct.
Okay. The next slide, we're going to kind of show you the tax share by our entities of how your house is broken out. I kind of like this slide showing you of our, of the taxes, where your bill comes from. So if you look at this particular slide, the, Corpus Christi ISD right now is 49.3% of your tax bill goes to the school district. The city includes 23.69%, the county, which includes our foreigner market lateral road, is at 11.84%, Delmar College is at 10.86, I mean, 10.66, and the hospital district is 4.45. So this kind of shows you of your house bill for your taxes. This is where, how your money gets divided for all your taxing entities. Now, we're going to kind of go into where your money comes from for the county. This is kind of, I kind of like this one, showing you of the money we receive in the county, 49.46% of every dollar comes from taxes. 3.7% of every dollar comes from fines, fees, and permits. 31.02 comes from intergovernmental revenue, and this is the money we receive from the state for sales tax reimbursement for the sale of vehicles, as well as other state items, as well as some of our state and federal grants comes here, and some of our reimbursements for some of our items that come from the state is where this is at. The next item of interest is the charges for services, where we charge fees, and we charge items for the entity coming in, or the person coming in, and that's 8.04%. Our investment income is there at .53. It doesn't seem like it's very large, but that's getting larger as we talk about, and we're keeping an eye on the market as we see, because it's an important item. Your other revenue is our rental income, as well as our commission revenues coming in, and that's 7.25%. So that, if you want to know where our money comes from for every dollar, this is how every dollar comes in, this is the breakdown for that particular item. We're now going to go through our expenses, showing you what some of our budget discussion items that we've had before, and what's some items coming up, something that we are required to do. We had a collective bargaining agreement negotiation with our Sheriff's Office Association, with our constables, and that agreement required an increase in salary of $1,49,000. We have in our personnel policy a continuous pay at the moment, and that currently is roughly at 273 employees, at $321,397. We were told by our Texas County District Retirement System that our retirement contribution was going to be required to be increased, because of some of the shortfall in the investments they had, and that increases $814,505. We will be opening the annex dormitories very soon, so we need to make sure we have the officers for the annex, and that is 12 correction officers at a cost of $547,636, and to be able to put this in, we reduce our overtime by $273,000. The state improved a increase for the district court judges, as well as state prosecuting attorneys, and because of this, the law has where our county court law judges are theoretically tied to the salaries of our district court judges, and therefore, this is a required salary increases. We have five county court law judges, and three of them received a certain, a minimal rate of, and the rest were at the maximum rate, for a total of $137,760. Go on, the next one is some additional proposed new costs. Now, these numbers are real rough estimates, they, I haven't had a chance to update some of this with some balances, so the numbers are not quite true numbers, but they're, in overall, they're correct. We're going to propose a limited number of new positions, and we can go that when we go our hearing, and that's $621,821, and this includes four sheriff's office sergeants for intake and release, and this was an important issue, as well as some other key issue items that we need to have there. We're still doing a small little reclassifications of some employees, and that was $278,682, and after our next hearings, we might have some changes for that number as well. Working with the county judge and HR director, we, and working with some scenarios of what we've had, we tried to do a living wage increase of all the employees that were below $30,000 per year, to try to get them up to a relatively living wage value. And that's what we discussed later on, but the total increase with that would be $1.427 million balance. Just so that we don't leave everybody else out, we are proposing a 2% cost of living increase, and this is just for regular employees, this does not include elected officials, and that cost is $833,258.
You might, excuse me, Dale, you might mention at what percentage?
2%.
Thank you.
We have this in, we had this several years back with a grant, it's already in the numbers, but I wanted to make sure we just know that this is a cost that we can definitely need, and this is a jail risk assessment value of $155,000, where we have two individuals from our adult probation in our jail to try to reduce our jail population, working through pretrial aversion and risk assessment, to try to make sure that those that can be released will be released, and that cost is $155,000 of the salary for those particular individuals. Now, we have some items that we're proposing for a capital improvement program. We'll be pushing this to the, if we do a issuance of an obligation of debt, this will probably be definitely added to those particular items. We had a request for, from our inner parts of doing a lot of improvement to jogging trails, bike trails, and sidewalks, and those improvements fit more of the capital improvement than they would do for repairs and maintenance of the grounds, and that's $800,000, as well as some of the playground equipment, and we're, as well. We're proposing another, a budget software for this office, as well as if we decide to advance into a budget office within the county of $100,000, which will benefit us next year on how we're doing this item. Now, the other two, the next few are kind of small, but we put them in here just to make sure that there may be other issues in the Robstown Community Center restrooms, and that may be more than 5,000, but that was the only thing that was, is part of the request, so we made sure that was included, as well as our senior community services building preventive maintenance of 1,000, and we're asking to add this to the capital improvement plan. Our hilltop facility improvements, we're also there, so we add that. We know that our courthouse elevators here are in the need of either being totally renovated or totally replaced, and that cost estimate is $1.6 million. We know that the chillers in this courthouse are in the process of being replaced, and that cost is right at a little bit more, around $2 million of what we have.
Those elevators are just for the tower, right?
Yes.
Not for this one out here?
Oh, well, right now, these are just the tower, I believe.
The 1.6...
It may include everything. I was just, real estimate, they just told me elevators, and make sure I put it there.
Let me double check on that. I believe the 1.6 is the one jail elevator, the atrium elevator, and the modernization of so many cars in the, let me, let me work on that completely.
This will definitely be an added to, whatever that value is for that, we'd make sure it's part of the capital improvement plan program. And we know that the city is going to be replacing the radio system for Metacom, and the share of the county is $2,79,000. We're working on several scenarios of this. Part of this might be a CIP, some of this will be already funded through, are already known balances that we have, and we're working on maybe at least on theoretically, so that's the total amounts for our capital improvement program of $6,664,000. Now, we ask where our...
Dale, do you believe that $2 million is appropriate, since we already have 1.3 allocated?
I can lower that down, yes.
I think that that would be probably, I mean, I mean, you and I kind of already know that, but if we're really being accurate, I feel like...
I can definitely lower that, yes.
Right. And then I also want to mention that, I don't want to get into the weeds, but the remainder could be financed, Commissioners, through daily wells.
That's what we, yes.
Right.
We finance.
The other elevators.
The next item is of every dollar spent, this is how we show the breakdown going out. Law enforcement, which is our sheriff's office, our jail, our constable's office, our DA's office, is 34.72%. Our administrative justice, which is all county and district courts, all of our JP courts, our district courts, our juvenile and detention items area is 30... courts, our district courts, our juvenile and detention items area is thirty, twenty-nine point, twenty-five point nine-three percent, so if you combine those together, we're at fifty-nine, fifty-nine percent of, of the dollar is, is for law enforcement or administrative justice. General government is twenty-four percent. General government is the commissioner's court, my office, the county attorney's office, the, the commissioner's court administration director's office, as well as HR and other smaller entities, including the tax office. Building of the facilities is, is what it, as stand, and that is at nine percent of our, every, every dollar. Other functions include our agricultural extension center, our, our social services i- items, and other small little functions of government that, that, that are there and how we spend, so that's for every dollar, this is how the breakdown of the balances. Now, we're going to talk about impact of future tax years coming up. As we know, the Senate Bill Number Two was, was signed by Governor Abbott on June the twelfth, two thousand nineteen, and what this does is reduce our rollback rate from eight percent to three point five percent, and that kind of gives us some issues of why we're doing what we're doing this year and how it might affect next year, so we, we make sure we have some tough decisions to make coming up for, because of these revenue caps and other revenue items. Another part of there was some additional appraisal values and different challenges that the, the state put in, and what, what, that's yet to be determined, and we'll see that coming in from the appraisal desk as, as the time fits. Now, we put it on here because this is a requirement for my office, which is called GABB eighty-seven, that's, that's an accounting standard for, for my office. This requires me to make sure there, at this point in time, there is no, there is no longer a, what we call operating leases, they're all considered capital leases, that doesn't mean a lot to everybody, but for, but for my office, it means we now, we now need to record certain values and certain assets, and we're, we're reading through every contract at the moment to see what might be affecting it, and currently, what, with, going through what we have, nothing that we've have currently would, would be affected this year, so this year, we're, we're fine, but we're going to continue working under this. As we know, we had a collective bargaining, labor agreement that was approved by the Sheriff's Office Association, including the Constable's Office. This is an agreement that has been reached and requires pay increases over the next, that, that should be four years, not five years, and I'll make sure that, that is, is adjusted, and there's some small increases as we go through the fi- final year. That is the proposal for the public hearing for this, this particular time. The next public hearing will be on August twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, at nine AM, in, in, in Commissioner's Court courtroom at, at, at this location. Other than that, that's all my proposal at the, at the moment. Do I have any questions, or do I need any clarification?
Good job, good job.
I just really want to reac, I mean, obviously, whoever is putting this together is just doing a great job, because it's not only appropriate for us, but it's appropriate for the public. This is literally our new fiscal brief. As you know, we produced one, you know, mid, mid-May. This is definitely, we're ready now to produce, you know, our new one, and this is exactly the graphics that, that we want to produce, and commissioners, really, we didn't do this, we did it for State of the County, but I knew that we were so close on the heels to a new fiscal year, I didn't want to overprint. We should print, and you should have all of this available in your, all of your commissioners' offices, and, and distribute wherever you want, because when you, taxpayer needs to understand where their dollar is, is being spent, and of course, when one sees the administration of justice, including our law enforcement, is over fifty percent of our budget, you can understand why we've made the investment that we have with our collective bargaining agreement, with our jail risk assessment, with our intake officers, with our annex. It's really important that they make that link. You have to help them do that by get, by distributing this, this communication piece.
Also, this is, well, this is for our public hearing, but, but my staff and I are, are in the process of putting together what we call a budget brief folder, that's going to be a lot more detailed than this, a lot more charged, because until we know the total, total impact of the budget and stuff, it, it, it's good to have, but until you know the, the final numbers, then, then we, then we can process something, and, and we'll have it in, in a relatively short format, it won't be any longer than ten, twelve pages.
That's great. Are there any questions at this time?
Judge, I agree, this is important, we need to keep this available. What are our plans to, I mean, we have this meeting, of course, as we meet with constituents, but what is our plan to get this out in front of the taxpayers? You know, do, do we have a space on our website, or how do we, how can we promote this a little bit more, because we're only going to be able to do so much, and people are going to hear these big numbers that the media is really going to focus on, but maybe miss the reality that we are dealing with, like collective bargaining and other issues, so what?
So, yeah, so we've actually put our, the same notice that we put in the newspaper, it's on our website. We actually did an accessible format as well for people that use screen readers, so there's actually a link between the notice of this hearing, the notice of Friday's hearing. What I could recommend, with permission of the court, I could actually ask our webmaster to link this presentation to the public notice.
Let me, let me do the small little corrections.
The changes first.
To make sure.
That's, that's fine.
And I'll work with Connie and, and the, and the Web Association to make sure we get it on the website.
John, I'm wondering, Commissioner, if you're suggesting that, remember, we have one more public hearing, so we need to get through that.
Once we get it passed.
I would be most pleased at Delmar if they'd have us at, you know, on Costura, at their Economic Center to host a town hall, if you will. I like show and tell, as you know, I enjoy the big board, and I think that it's really important. I want everybody to know as much as possible, because I don't think this is anything to shy away from. I think in, in, we think of taxes and we cringe, and I want us to understand that these dollars are going to the benefit of our community, and how we're allocating them is an absolute, it's, it's imperative that, that we get this message out. I had not, it's not on a calendar right now, but if, if commissioners think that's appropriate, I'll work with the court manager, and Tyner, I'm certain you could help me make those arrangements.
Yeah, I know other counties, they, they have, they host at least one in every precinct, I'd love to have one, and if we just do one big one at one time, or if we do separate ones, Delmar just happens to be in my precinct, but I'll take that one.
Well, I just like it because of the space.
Yeah, I know, and it's a great location, it's a new building, it's, it can fill a lot of people to come in, but I think, hopefully, that this is the, the practice that we'll have from now on.
Right.
Throughout the years, it's really a little bit more openness, and just hopefully more chance for one-on-one, because we know that, you know, this hour of the day is tough for some people to come out, and they may watch it on replay, or they may be watching it from home or at work on the computers, which is great, but for that interaction, like you're saying, I think that this would be a great.
Well, and Commissioner, I'm actually sensitive to your rural areas. I don't think, I think we should do have a central one, but I'm not opposed to having one on the island, one, you know, port-a. I'll do whatever it is that you'd like us to do.
Bishop, port-a.
Okay, whatever you think is, is necessary, if it's, we'll just work, let's work through Tyner on that. Is that all right, Tyner? One more job for you.
No, it's no problem.
Thank you.
Would you all recommend, since I have everybody here, maybe, we have the, the last public hearing on the tax rate on Friday, we are going to be setting up a public hearing on the budget for August twenty-eighth. That's advertised in the paper as well. Would you all like to do a Monday or Tuesday night?
So, wait, you're trying to, yeah, because remember the timing, we moved all this up.
I'm worried about Labor Day weekend.
I can't pull this off between now and then.
Right.
I mean, I'm not.
Let's, let's work with, let's work with Tyner's office, you know, Tyner, the idea is, is, maybe, let's, we're, I think we need to look at the calendar and see.
Yeah.
And, and just so you know, I don't mind at least sharing it, I can do it kind of an overall, overall encompassing, and then, you know, allow commissioners to do what they will. Either way, we can get this information quickly to all of the areas that are represented here.
Do you have one only, I mean, that, that at least we get the.
Yeah, we could do one big one, and I can take care.
And that's good, and, you know.
But I mean, inviting all the mayors is very important, for instance, right? Inviting all of the, Alulse, Banquete, Bishop Driscoll, Porter Anzis, that, that to me is, is very important. Invite all the business associations that fill in the gap, Petronilla, I'm sorry, I was, so I think that's probably.
That'd be good.
Okay, are there any other further comments with regards to the presentation that we've just had? Hey, if not, I'm going to close this public hearing at this time.
And announce it one more time.
Would you like me to announce the?
For the next hearing.
The next one.
Announce the next hearing, okay, can you give me that date one more time?
The next public.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's right here, August twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, at nine AM, and again, that's August twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, nine AM, it's going to be here in this Commissioner's courtroom, and we welcome participation by Neises County citizens.
And Judge, did we ask, I don't know that there is, is there anybody here that wants to make public comment on this?
I did ask earlier, I'm, I'm always happy to.
That was public comment on public comment, I don't know.
To offer. Edward, sign me up real quick, like.
Just making sure.
I do? Okay.
It's an agenda item, you can, no, it's, it's an agenda item, Judge, I don't think you have to sign up for, oh, you have other public comments, sorry.
I was just going to make a quick housekeeping comment, that we are having active shooter training today. For those of you that are listening in the building, I want to also commend Timothy Everest, Sheriff Hooper, and the entire team that helped assemble this active shooter training. This is our third one here in the courthouse. I myself participated in the very first one, it was absolutely excellent. If you did not get a chance to attend one of the three, and you would like to, I would urge you to please email Timothy, and I know he can probably make arrangements for you to attend another training class that might be occurring within the county. I think this is just absolute, we're, we're very, we're very blessed to be able to have, really, the experts in, in this field here locally, and so I want to thank Officer Travis Pace, who led these three trainings. In addition, I want to remind everybody that's listening in the building that the twenty-third, we're having the employee appreciation event on the second floor, and we look forward to seeing everybody. And with that, that's all I have. I'm ready to close this public hearing, and the time is ten oh-five for the clerk, so we are gavelled out, and now we're going to go into our regular agenda items, and we have three of these commissioners, and I believe the first is tied with a executive session event as well, so I'll read it, and then ask that we move to executive session on this particular item. For the purposes of the audience and those listening, number one is discuss and consider selection of outside law firm to represent Neises County in pursuing legal matters involving the property insurance claims stemming for Hurricane Harvey and related matters. Do I have a motion, do I need a motion to go into?
You have to announce the, the provisions that you're going into executive session.
Right, but do you want us to go into, I, I think we should probably do two and three as well.
Yes.
Right, so at this time, A-one will be, and I will read the executive session item, we, we do choose to go into executive session at this time, and so I have a motion, and do I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, but on, on number two, I also would like to read it and then do the same, if that's all right?
Yeah, two and three are tied into.
Right, they're all tied in, I just want to announce them, and then I'll read the executive session disclosures. Number two is discuss and consider adopting an order authorizing the county judge to execute the professional services agreement, which is designated a contingent fee special counsel for property insurance claims with a selected law firm to represent Neises County in legal matters involving property insurance claims stemming for Hurricane Harvey and related matters. In addition, and so also, we will, I will be reading the disclosures, and I would like a motion to go into executive session in a second.
One second.
And then number three is discuss and consider authorizing the county attorney to request approval of the professional services agreement from the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts and Related Matters. Do you want to take that one up right now?
No, it's all tied in.
All of that's going to be tied in? Oh, the Texas Comptroller for the approval of such agreements. Okay, that's actually not written exactly, but the purpose of this commission, commissioners is that those agreements that we have been designating in number, item number two must, per statute, be authorized and approved by the Texas Comptroller's Office. So, I'm not sure we actually motion and voting on it, but I think we can just go straight into the, the disclosures. At this time, I'm going to announce that I'm giving public notice that Commissioner's Court does elect, indeed, to go into executive session in order to discuss matters that have been listed on the agenda, and as I have read above, items one, two, three. When authorized to do so by the Open Meetings Act, Chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, in event that the Commissioner's Court elects to do so, the sections that authorize such sections are publicly announced, and I do so at this time, as I'm the presiding officer, Texas Code Sections five-five-one, oh-seven-one, oh-seven-two, oh-seven-three, oh-seven-four, oh-seven-four-five, oh-seven-six, oh-eight-six, oh-eight-seven. We do elect to consult with our attorney at this time to include matters, but not limited to, related to litigation, deliberate, deliberate regarding real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, including termination, county advisory boards, security devices, economic development negotiations, and any other matters that may be discussed in executive session that may be appropriate. Upon completion of the executive session, Commissioner's Court may come into open session, and we will take such action as appropriately deemed on items discussed in executive session. And with that, I will gavel us out, and the time for the clerk is ten oh-nine, and we'll be back on the record when we come back in. Mics are now off. Okay, thank you so much, Tyner. Thank you, everybody, we are back on the record at, I'm guessing, eleven-twelve, calling, gaveling us back in, we are back from executive session, and at this time, we are going to take up a regular agenda item, A-one, and we think it's appropriate at this time for, we know that we have representatives from at least two different law firms that I recognize, and maybe there's somebody else, and we'd love to invite you to make a public comment, to share your experience, your background, why you think you would be an effective firm to represent Neises County. We're all lawyers, I'm a lawyer too, so I say this with love, we're going to limit your time, but I think that I've had the opportunity to, you know, visit with you, but not everybody has, even though you've left materials, and so we would like to do that this time. For the record, if you'd state your name, so that the clerk can record it properly, and the name of your law firm that you represent, and let's just take, you know, five minutes each, and then allow commissioners to ask questions if, if they have any questions at this time. County attorneys, is that all right?
Yes.
Is that inappropriate?
Yes.
Okay, and so, recognizing that I know that there's two firms here, would the AZA Law Firm like to come and approach?
Good morning.
Morning.
Joe Ahmed with AZA, the full.
I'm sorry, I called it AZA, because that's how I remembered it. It's AZA.
It's all right, it's an improvement on Ahmed Zavizano Sanapacos Halliwell and Mensing.
I'm going to have to agree.
Having said that, I'm sure my time is up, but thank you for this opportunity to speak to Commissioner's Court Judge, obviously happy to answer any questions, but by way of background, we started the firm in nineteen ninety-three, we're litigation only, we focus on trial, whether it be in court or in arbitration, we probably try as many cases as anybody in Texas, and have done so for many years. We've grown, now we're up to about fifty lawyers. We have been lucky enough to be recognized, in fact, just this year, and in previous years as Litigation Department of the Year in Texas, we have gotten some of the largest judgments all across the country, including one particular one against Lloyds of London, which is currently on appeal, set for oral argument next year. It's the largest judgment in a first-party insurance case that I'm aware of, at least, and it's against Lloyds of London. What else? We have been, several of our lawyers, including me, are recognized as top one hundred in Texas, best lawyers, super lawyers. We have all kinds of accolades that are listed in the brochures, but, hearing, Your Honor, I will be brief, and certainly answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much for that, and, and I'll open it up at this time, if anybody has any specific questions. The nice thing is that we've been talking about you.
[laughing]
You know, I think the only thing that I wanted to really ask, and I think it's something that, that we've talked about, is that your firm works on both contingency fee contracts and hourly, is that correct?
That is correct, especially for a lot of cases in which we're the plaintiff, we offer contingency arrangements.
Okay.
Absolutely, and happy to hear as well.
Right, and also, one of the things that I asked you when I got to meet you for the first time, is whether or not you had, you know, a nexus to Neises County, or had done any. or had done any litigation in Neoces County. And I just, for the benefit of the court, I would like for them to, you know, have your background or any of your lawyers' backgrounds that you think might fit there.
Sure. We have... One of the members of the team, I think, was here last. Is from the Valley, and he spent a fair amount of time in Corpus Christi. The firm, including myself and other members of the team, have litigated in Corpus before, both in state and federal. My practice has tended to be federal. And historically, it's been in front of Judge Jack. More lately, Judge Ramos. But for many years, Judge Jack. And of course, now, I did hear the presentation on your tax rate, so I think we would like to make more of a local connection because we're very envious, being from Harris County, being property owners in Harris County, hearing about...
And we welcome you buying property here in Neoces County. In fact, as they say, I've got some oceanfront property to sell.
Yeah, well, at that tax rate, it's extremely appealing, I have to say.
Yes, yes, it is. It is.
Well, you haven't seen the cities and the school districts yet. No, I'm just kidding.
We do our part. What can we say? The other thing is, I think the Commissioners' Court would like to know this particular insurance claim has a contract that bears an arbitration clause. And the Commissioners' Court would like to know a little bit about your experience with arbitrations.
Well, in the commercial setting, which is the way, you know, the setting we operate in, arbitration clauses are very common. When you're talking about companies suing companies in particular, and even sometimes companies suing individuals, I would say at least 50% these days tend to have arbitration agreements in there. Companies like them because they believe they provide certainty to the outcome, more so than a jury trial. So they're very common at any given time. You know, roughly half of our litigation is in arbitration, and we've gotten several arbitration awards. The problem with them, from my perspective, is they tend to be more confidential. And so you can't see them listed as much because some of them are very confidential. But yes, we do about half of our work is in arbitration. About half is in court.
Okay, thank you. As I say, going once, going twice. Okay, we appreciate you making the effort to be here with us in Neoces County to give us not only the background today, but a few days ago, when you also came to visit with the county attorney. And we're very appreciative of that effort. I believe if you want the work, you should come to town to ask for it. So, thank you.
Absolutely, we are. And of course, if there's any other questions even after today, more than happy to answer it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to recognize another law firm that I see, and that's the law firm of Hilliard Gonzalez Puegios. And I'm going to acknowledge Bob Hilliard. I'm sure he's accompanied here by another member of the firm. I always say Judge John. John Martinez. Welcome, Bob.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. I'm going to extend the same courtesy. Just, I know you. Maybe everybody knows you, but take nothing for granted. Tell us what you'd like to... For us to know about your firm as it relates to this potential claim.
Sure. By way of background, I came to Corpus in 1983. I worked for two years for a lawyer named Guy Allison. And then I started my own firm. It was just me and a Radio Shack phone. And I grew the practice over decades. Started as just a personal injury attorney. We then evolved into representing cities against landfills who found contamination leaching into their yards. We then grew the practice into more of a national practice where we started being invited to go literally from coast to coast to represent larger and larger groups of folks. We have always focused on the plaintiff's side. We've always done contingency fees. Currently, right now, I'm in my fifth year of every single month going to New York City, where I was appointed to lead the single largest litigation against General Motors as a result of the ignition switch litigation. We report to a judge named Jesse Furman. He's been in the news lately because of the census issues. He's the one that wrote the opinion that went to the U.S. Supreme Court. Very, very smart judge, very active judge. By way of examples, just to give you hopefully a hint of how we'll represent the county, we go once a month to see Judge Furman. He gives us three months' worth of work. And he wants us back in another month, and he wants that work done. And then he'll have three more months' worth of work. And we've been doing it successfully, and I think to his liking. Certainly, the litigation has been very successful. It's resolved in close to $1 billion worth of payouts to plaintiffs, and they're now about to arbitrate the economic loss part of the case out in California with one of the probably finest mediators, arbitrators that there is in this country. So we're a team of lawyers who are ready to literally go anywhere in the country that I think we need to go. I feel strongly about this case because this is my home. This is the law firm that is now close to 100 employees. A law firm that, as the leader of the law firm, I'm not going anywhere. I'm not moving to San Antonio or Austin. This is where Catherine and I, my wife, and our seven kids live. So I'm committed. You know, Harvey started to form in the Gulf of Mexico on August 17th, and it hit Corpus on August 24th. So we're up against it on getting this claim filed. We have a confidential arbitration award, which I believe is one of the largest ever in the country, that, as my friend from Houston said, you know, you can't really share all of the facts of each arbitration. But this was against the Stripes Corporation as a result of some bad conduct. And we spent months and months getting ready for and then participating in the arbitration. One thing I did notice is that the policy also has a mandatory arbitration venue in New York City. And New York law applies. And I would suggest to you that in the last five years, we have been dealing exclusively with New York judges, New York attorneys, and New York law firms. I, you know, have access to almost every different type of law firm that we may need to tap into as a resource. I think the New York Bar respects HMG as a result of what we've done for General Motors. And I think if we can't prevail on that arbitration mandatory venue and this county Harvey damages ends up in New York, I'm comfortable there. I'm comfortable going up and picking an arbitrator from there, and I think that's part of the process.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, I would invite any discussion...
I have a question.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Just two. How many lawyers do you have in your firm? And if you were to get this, would you try it personally? I mean, you're in New York all the time now.
Yeah, the second part of the question I'll answer first, and that is, I have a team ready to go. And I told my team, this is the case that I'm not only going to try personally, but I'm going to work on personally. You know, I'm not going to pass... I will have the team working on it, but I will personally be involved, both in the discovery, the pretrial, and the trial. So I'm not going to show up at trial. I'm going to start from day one. And in fact, we had the conversation last night. I said, if we do get hired, you know, every Friday, my office, we're going to be planning this. And I would invite you guys to invite us back, and we'll give you an update as much as you want. We'll keep you posted. We'll keep you informed. I believe the number is 17 attorneys. It may be 20. We have a law firm in Austin as well that has eight lawyers, but they do mostly antitrust litigation and social justice litigation. But they're available.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners. Okay, I think you did a very good and thorough job here. If there's no other questions at this time, we appreciate the comments really from both firms. And at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion.
It was the third...
Oh, forgive me, Lauda. I'm so sorry. Yes.
Was interested.
Yes.
That was a Lanier law firm.
Forgive me.
They did provide some, I guess, some literature. They did come by on Monday as well and visited. And pretty much Mr. Lanier said that, I mean, he... It was my understanding that he would also try the case.
Right.
And he has the same type of experience with suing other insurance companies as well as arbitration.
Right. Let me also speak to that. Please forgive me. There's no doubt that the Lanier firm also is an incredibly competent law firm from Houston. You recall, Commissioners, they already represent us in the opioid litigation here in Neoces County, so we're intimately familiar with their work. And in fact, Mr. Lanier just got selected to try the Bellwether case in Dallas County. In addition, his team did come to Neoces County. They are incredibly impressive. I can't say enough about Skip McBride and how much I admire him and his team and know that they also would be a fine candidate. Before we do take a motion, let me take the executive privilege of being the county judge and saying thank you again to everybody that's here in the courtroom today and to the Lanier firm who made the effort to come to Neoces County and also present the county attorney with a good presentation. I am not litigious, but I believe that justice should be served. And I believe that we, as a county, should not be afraid to defend our county. I think that this claim is not only meritorious and substantial, but quite frankly, hopefully sets a tone that insurance companies need to respect the fact that counties like ours pay premiums, good premiums, timely premiums. And when we have these claims after a CAP-4 hurricane hits, the infrastructure that we support is absolutely critical, that it be taken care of. And that's why we have insurance. And to be... To not receive our fair share is not only hurtful and wrong, aside from the legal claims. We just have a duty, Commissioners, to get this job done. And I just take that duty very seriously. And so to have the caliber of legal representation that has come to say, "I'll help. I'll defend," it just means the world. And I think that we have made some real new nexuses, new networks here because of something bad. There has to be some silver lining, right? In fact, I don't really think, you know, there's many good things that have happened because of a guy named Harvey. But no doubt, being able to have such fine people, men and women, represent your firms, come and say they would be honored to defend these meritorious claims is very, very welcome by this judge. So with that...
Judge, I just want to say...
Yes.
All three law firms are outstanding, excellent. You know, and of course Lanier from Houston also. We were doing some business with them, and they're good. They're really, you know, they're outstanding lawyers and all that. The AZA is also real good, and they got a lot of outstanding work. I'm going to go with probably Hilliard Law Firm because they're already connected in New York. They have resources in New York. And I think that Mr. Hilliard taking the lead would benefit our county here locally. So, I mean, I make a motion that we go with the Hilliard Law Firm.
Second.
Judge, if I could, discussion...
Absolutely. I'll call for discussion.
I really want to make sure that we make the point to the public also because you bring up litigation. Nobody wants to enter into litigation with ease or, you know, without really thinking through it. We are on the eve of almost Harvey hitting. And the point I'm making with that is we have worked very hard for two years to try to resolve this without litigation.
That's correct.
And we were unable to do so. We went to the extreme measure of hiring even a public adjuster. It's thinking, before we hired lawyers, we would try everything we possibly could before we entered into litigation. And I think that it's important for the public to know that because this is not something that we just do, that we just want to do because, you know, we are a very business-friendly community, and we want to be, you know, recognized as that. So it... But we just can't resolve it. You know, we can't get it resolved anywhere near what we believe the damages to this county were and we can quantitatively show that. So I agree, and I appreciate all the law firms that have applied to do this. I think bringing Bob Hilliard and John Martinez in and their firm is very important because it does show a local presence and with a firm that's as good as anyone there is. So I'm happy to support that firm, not because the other two aren't great, but because on a claim like this, I think it's important that we show also that we try to support the firms that are local, that are outstanding, and not just because they're local. I mean, this, you know, there's not 10, you know, Hilliard... I don't even know what the... Hilliard, Martinez, and Gonzalez now. Is that what it is? I think, you know, everybody changes names. There's not 10 of those in Corpus Christi, but there certainly is. And there are other very good firms also. But we're very lucky to have Mr. Hilliard and Mr. Martinez here today. And so I would support that motion and move forward with it and get them both involved. And, you know, I mean, and if they're going to meet every Friday morning, if it's okay, if we hire them, then I show up every once in a while. I'd like to listen in on some of this because this is fascinating stuff. I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but I'd certainly like to hear some of that strategy that we're developing because this is a big deal for this county. This is a big deal. We suffered millions of dollars of losses legitimate, and we've got to be able to recoup those for the taxpayers. It's absolutely essential.
Mr. Martinez.
Judge, I just, you know, I know you've done a great job, and of course, a county attorney as well, in incorporating a lot of these law firms that we have dealt with into other litigation. And obviously, we have two great firms that are here present today. And so I hope and I know that we will not forget maybe whoever is not selected so that we can utilize their expertise because there are plenty of reasons that we have to unfortunately go to court. But when we do, we want the best, not only in our area, which we would say includes Harris County, but, you know, outside of the state as well. So I just hope that we consider that as well as we move forward for other issues.
Agreed. At this time, I'll call for the question. Madam Clerk, I think we have a standing motion by Commissioner Gonzalez and seconded by Vaughn. All those in favor of hiring the Hilliard Law Firm along with John Martinez, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay. At this point, regular agenda item number two, Commissioners, I'll take a motion. It's simply the authorization to execute this professional services agreement. And it will allow me to execute, but it will allow also the county attorney to process the negotiations of that contract. And I'll take a motion in a second. And I'll... Any discussion with that? This will be based on a contingency fee contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Commissioners, number three is a result of a statute that currently exists up until September 1st, and that's that the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts review these contingency fee contracts and, in fact, ministerially approve them. After September 1st, it will go to a different office, that being the Attorney General of the State of Texas. Will you... I'll hear a motion to authorize the county attorney to request such approval.
I'll move.
And a second.
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. At this time, that is... Concludes our regular agenda, one, two, and three. And we've already taken action on executive item A, but not B. But I would just say for the court and the clerk, it's a consult only on item number B. So there is no action required from executive session at this time. And therefore, I'm going to gavel us out... Well, actually, do you want to gavel... Do you want to start a workshop separately? I agree. Let's do 11:35 a.m., and I'm gaveling us out for this record. I'd like to take just a five-minute break, if it would be all right, before we start the workshop, discuss with our auditor kind of what the lay of the land is, knowing that we have... We might have a few people needing to excuse themselves at this time. Okay, thank you, everybody, and we'll be back on the record shortly. And we're gaveling in for workshop at 12:45. And the purpose of today's workshop is...
11:45.
I'm so sorry. 11:45. Is to really discuss the Neoces County 2019-2020 budget. And as everybody knows, we've just got a great presentation that really sets the stage. But now Dale is going to make a presentation that he needs guidance from us in order to meet some of the deadlines that he has coming up. Dale, will you start us off?
Yes, Your Honor. What I'm trying to do is trying to finalize the position schedules, which means any possible new employment that we have coming in, possible reclassifications. And then we have some directions from a few of the Commissioners and working with our HR director and Judge and I on trying to bring a... HR director and the judge and I, on trying to bring a relatively functional of a living increase for those employees that are at the very low end of our pay schedule and try to bring them more of a fair living standards for this. We've gone through several scenarios, including HR does several scenarios on what we need to try to do. We put some scenarios together. I think we've got one that works. And then after, with that, we want to make sure we don't leave everybody out. We want to make sure anybody that doesn't get this, these increases that we'll be talking about would then get a cost of living increase of 2%. And that's what we're proposing, 2%. We can definitely go up or down from that level to try to get this. And my total overall cost, including everything, is 5.1 million. So, we just provide you a list of the balances of our new positions and our reclassifications. And then I gave you a scenario of what our possible cost of living increase would be. Right now, I want to go through the first page we gave to you on number 11. I'll kind of explain what I did to make sure we're still in kind of a somewhat agreement of how the new position would be. And I'm on 11-1.
What you said, total of 5.1 million, what does that total include?
That includes a new, recommended new positions, recommended new reclassifications, bringing those that are below 30,000, up to a $30,000 range, and then doing a 2% cost of living increase. That includes everything.
And everything meaning all the classifications, new positions, everything?
Everything.
So, but, so your 5.1 is less than the ceiling of 6.5?
Correct.
Okay, so, pardon me?
I think it's 6.4. Is it 6.5?
6.4 is, would be at the rate, yes.
Okay. I'm just making sure. So, you've come up with a way to do this with, at 5.1, everything you just said, that keeps within your recommended number, which reduces the tax rate?
Yes.
Okay, so then, your proposal would reduce the tax rate, include everything that you just said, increasing the reserves?
Yes.
How much?
Yes. Five to 600,000.
Okay, so you basically did it by not increasing the reserves as much as you originally proposed?
Correct. The other way would be closer to a million.
I think the other way was closer to two and a half. No, no, this one was two and a half.
Once we include this, it'd be, yes. Once we include all this, it would be closer to a million, 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 three, where if I, we, if we do the 1%, where, or the 1% above the effective rate would bring us closer to 500,000 to 600,000. So, yes.
Okay, so, and I'm just being clear, right? Because I just got all this. So, I got this, but I didn't read it the way that you're telling me, so I'm making sure and then I'll let you go into the specifics, is all these new costs, included in the new costs somewhere has got to be what the debt service rate, that's, but I know that's a different conversation, I get it, but it still all affects the effective tax rate and, you know, all that kind of good stuff. But what your slide would show back on page whatever would be a proposed decrease in the tax rate.
Correct.
If we accept this and still does all the things that you're telling us.
If the original proposal in the first book that we gave you, which was 1% above the effective rate, which is less than the proposed rate, would bring in 5.5 million and where we need 5.1 to cover this.
Which gives you that extra 500,000 for reserves?
Yes.
Okay, so basically, you were creative in saying, "We're not going to put as much in the reserves this year because we've actually done so well with our reserves that we're still making good progress by putting in that 500,000." You just took some of that and reapportioned it to some of these other things that other commissioners gave you ideas for.
Correct.
Is that fair?
That's correct.
All right, go ahead. That's creative.
So, what we try to do.
I appreciate it.
And for the new positions, I went in and definitely still included the jail annex, the officers. By doing this, I reduced their overtime by 237,000 as we requested. I kept in the new positions for the, now the ones for that says for the auto technicians, those were not really new positions, so we're, those will be taken off because they're not really, they're a reclassification, not new positions. So, I did not include those. The ones that are 121, I did, I did include the CIS AutoCAD designer as well as the lead road foreman. And I was able to do that by reducing the employment of the GIS engineering specialist and engineering specialist. So, we added two, but we took away two.
Okay, Dale, one thing. Two of those are also, they're not, two of those are, they're not asking for additional monies because they have those, they're paying for those two.
The two on 120, that was a mistake on this part. The auto technicians were just being, they were changing two of the mechanic twos to auto technicians, so just changing titles.
So, really, on number 121, they're only actually, they're paying from two to make the other two.
Yes, they're adding, asking for two and they're removing two, yes.
But we don't add no more money to that.
Well, actually, it's a reduction of 20,000.
Right, right.
And Dale, I'm sorry, my last question, I think, on this is, so what is your then, what with this new proposal, what is the proposed tax rate under your proposal?
If my proposal would be to do the 1% above the effective rate.
Okay, hold on, let me go back to slide.
Maybe you should give a sense, like 0.3?
That's what I'm looking for because you have the slide.
You don't mind.
The slide here.
I can get that.
I think what you're saying is different than what the slide says because the slide says the proposed rate goes from 3.313 and stays at 0.313, but you're saying it's going to go down under your proposal.
Yes, yes.
So, what would that 0.313 be?
Let me just, just one quick second if I have a second, so.
I like down. Down is good.
So, if I was to do the 1% above the effective rate, the total rate would be 0.308987?
0.30897, which means we can do all of this and the tax rate goes down.
And that's a 0.004 difference from what we were provided. If that's how the, if that's the way to do, because we do have the funds and it would do an increase in fund balance.
And then there's a second proposal that you're going to talk about.
Well, first of all, we'll go through the process of adding the, we will still add the senior clerk for the tax district collector in my office. The county court five would add a position. Court administration would be the two part-time positions, but we're reducing temporary to cover that, our majority of temporary to cover that. Now, the district attorney, we're including the witness, but we're also including the high profile at the moment. And for the jail, we're doing the three, the four sergeants. And for $1,500, for the Department of 1500, the HVAC employees, I'm only including one, not both, I'm only including one of those positions. And right now, I'm including the emergency management office, but not at the administrative secretary. I'm, we're working with HR, we're going to do it as a senior clerk, which is about $4,000 less than that, but we're still doing that. So, for my particular purposes, we're not including the constable precinct two at the moment until we figure out the total cost of how much we're going to bring their office as well as what the income they're bringing in. And for the Department of 1500, we're only, the one HVAC, so that's what is currently included in the proposal that has before you.
Dale, didn't we have one for county clerk, clerk for the elections? Did you have one for elections?
No.
Not for elections, but.
No.
Yes, we did.
I thought you had one for, I thought it was one for elections, I'm not sure.
No, not for elections, but to raise.
For the living, because Judge Canales had a very good idea was about, so our senior twos don't make that much more than our senior one clerks. So, it was my understanding that they were going to look at the bottom as a whole of all employees.
Right, so.
So, and so y'all didn't include anyone from county clerk's office at all.
So, this is Dale's proposal? I've still got mine coming up.
These came from the department request. If you did not submit a department request to increase your salaries, it's not part of that. I've got a scenario later on coming up where we increase everybody else.
Right, maybe wait for budget number two?
Okay, and I would love to see yours.
Yeah.
Yours is a lot different than this, but he, we asked about that. He said, "No, don't worry, we take care of all of that anyway."
Remember one thing here, everybody's going to be, base pay will be 30,000. There's nobody going to be on the 30,000.
I just don't want my staff who works just as hard.
Oh, neither.
And I'm looking at some of these going, "Really? Records manage, okay, let's increase that." You're, I'm shocked by some of the recommendations, frankly.
On new positions?
Yep.
Yeah, reclassifications.
Oh, reclassifications, right. So, that's, like I say, we have a different proposal, but at least in a minute, you can't really know how to compare until you hear this side and then that side. And then I'll ask Dale to maybe try to summarize, okay, what's really different between A and B?
Yeah, that's good.
And on for reclassification, as you're saying, some of these on 12-1, 12-2, we did some of them, we didn't do all of them. We did not do 1470, did not get reclassified at all. They stayed where they were at because we have another scenario we'll be bringing up later. We reduced some of the costs for the grand administration that was not at 16%. We reduced them because of what y'all wanted and y'all discussed, so that is now as a 10%. But we can definitely still reduce those values. There's a lot of stuff on the road fund. We kind of revised this schedule and it's hard to say this because we've made some scenarios and working up different plans. And so, I'll give you a better detail when I have time to put this all together and show you what exactly it was that was being a reclassification. But what I want to try to do is go through the next scenario is what we're trying to do. And you'll see you got a value, saying a cost of living, pay increase value, and that's where I came up with the 5 million, Commissioner. This includes everything we put in reclassification-wise as well as new position-wise. And what we did is we took the levels of groups 11 through 17 and reevaluated their levels of costs and level of income for the employees that are at that level. And working with the HR director myself and the judge, we kind of decided to, we want to try to increase those at the bottom level to try to get a more realistic living value. So, those that are pay group 11 got the biggest increase. And then it gets smaller towards, at the point, but everyone got an increase. And as Commissioner Gonzalez was saying, the lowest pay is still slightly below 30,000, but it's right at 29,000. So, it's relatively the value, so we start there at level 11, 12, and you'll see the pay group. So, everyone that was in pay group 11 theoretically got around a 30% increase. And then we lowered it down as we gone up through each of the pay groups, the 25, 20, 15, 10, 5, to try to get a more realistic group, but still have a gap between each group to make sure if you were at a 15 and next group was a 16, 16, so I got paid more than the 15 and try to make this value. And that's where we came up, the balance we had. We didn't want to leave anybody else out, so we threw in a 2% cost of living increase on everyone else that qualified, but did not include any of the elected officials or anybody under the law enforcement bargaining unit as well. It did not include any of the pay group 11 through 17. So, I know there's a lot to throw at you at the moment, but I'm trying to try to show you that if we are liable to do this and I can provide as much information as you'd like, we still have the funds in our current proposal as well as my proposed rate to be able to fund what we're trying to do to try to get our lowest employees to a more realistic living wage.
Does, let me ask a question because my big concern is about the sheriff's office where we talked about the cadets were not included in the collective bargaining. So, where are they included in here?
They will be increased, yes. They will be, they're going to go up to a pay group 19, so their basic starting pay will be around 34,000. And the starting pay for the correctional officers one is like 36, so about $2,000 less.
And let me.
I'm leaving them from 17 to 19.
That's about a $3,000 jump for those cadets, right?
Yes.
That's pretty, that's 10%, that's pretty good.
Yes, yes.
It's a.
No, no, I agree.
Yeah. And that was identified as in the beginning of your notebook when we first started as a budget challenge, it's a total of $74,000 to the whole kit and caboodle. And it's real, it's well worth it because that's where we're having the most issues. What I really like about what we're doing right now is if you put 50% of your budget is law enforcement and administration of justice, you know that you've got to find a rate of return and that's why we're doing it. I want to, I want to just try to do a synopsis of what's different, what's really different. So, Dale's proposing 0.30897 and what I'm proposing is 0.313088. That's the same tax rate as we had last year. So, just if you're writing down notes, 0.30897 is auditor, 0.30897. That would generate 5.5 million of new revenue. 5.5, okay. And mine is 0.313088. And you need to write down, that is the same tax rate as last year. It would produce 6.4 million in revenue.
Correct.
The other thing you need to remember is that on your book that we went through earlier this morning, when you look at the combined Nueces County rate, overall, you're going down. So, the taxpayer will get a less, a rate that is cumulatively lower than it was last year, cumulatively, okay? But since we set the hospital district rate, the buck stops with us. So, you fall in the sword and you also get to, you know, get praised if you can find a way to cumulatively bring that tax rate low. What is the major difference? The major difference, as I see it, is getting ready for revenue caps next year requires, in my opinion, the county to maximize their dollars this year. That's why you see most urban counties going to the rollback rate. This is a nice compromise for a conservative county who wishes to see a major change in the way they do business. What do I mean by that? Under our proposal with the pay schedules that Dale's just outlined, and this I think addresses the clerk's concerns, is that pay grades 11 through 17 will have a real opportunity to have, in my opinion, what is a living wage. I wish I could have gotten it to 15, perfect, but I got real, real close. The lowest pay grade goes to 1463 and the 16 goes to 1493. It's really close. And then from 17 to 21, it's, I can't remember, let's have to look. You go from $15 all the way to 1845. So, we've achieved what we thought we could not achieve, which is that most, if you combine CPI, if you can, if you can, if you can concentrate on the CPI piece of it, you've been able to now achieve your $15. It may not be year one, but within that three-year block, 273 people that work for our county that earn the lowest, under 30,000, will now be above the poverty level. And so, that was our number one goal, is can we affect pay grades 11 through 17 where we've identified them earning less than the poverty level? And can you still achieve the gap so that you wouldn't have a supervisor who would earn more than, let's say, somebody who worked underneath the supervisor? So, in order to achieve our overall quality of life, we thought of it as a three-year program. The first year, we would really focus and target on everybody that's earning at the poverty level. The second year, we would focus on pay groups, I think, is it 21 through 28, 22 through 28?
18 through 21.
18 through 28, sorry. And we would tackle them next year because if you look at their numbers cumulatively, that is about a, probably like a 400, I don't know, somewhere around 300 to 400,000 dollar adjustment if we were to bring them up accordingly. And that is my proposal. And then the third year would be to tackle, after a compensation study was performed, the professional and department heads because we think that they are not also in keeping with other urban counties. So, this three-year plan is a plan to get, to lift all boats, but to do so in a way that's fiscally responsible. And so, the exciting thing for me to be able to propose. the exciting thing for me to be able to propose is that we can do this. And we also suggested that in order to have good faith with everybody, and because I do believe inflation exists, a cost of loving, a cost of living adjustment at 2%. It's under the national average, but it's still very good and it's what we can afford. 2% would be given as a COLA for all the employees. This combined with the three-year program really takes a deep, deep consideration into the value of our employees. The first thing you have to do is take the lowest paid people and give them a living wage, period. The second thing is take everybody that's earning in the middle and say, you are going to be addressed next year. And then the third thing to our professionals to say is, we are going to absolutely value you, but we need to have a compensation study and a program and policy in place so that we can address your needs as well. What we did to create a comprehensive package is present a health plan that did not raise their premiums and gives them about 10 more serious supplemental benefits, including telemedicine and patient care navigation that can help their families. In addition to all of that, we are proposing a tuition loan assistance program that mirrors our, I'm sorry, our student loan assistance program that mirrors our tuition assistance program. And we have a belief that that will be also of good faith and tremendous effort. That combined with making certain that every department has the resources they need, plus the new hires they need, is achieved under the 3.13088 proposal. In other words, you can continue to see your fund balance increase by half a million to a million. You can create a living wage. You can create a three-year plan for all employees. Acknowledge them with a COLA, albeit it's modest, but it is a strong indication of goodwill and acknowledgement that that exists, a cost of living adjustment exists. Plus a new and improved health plan with no insurance premium raised, in my opinion, says we value you. I think that is all achievable, plus being fiscally prudent, knowing that if you stay at .30897, if you go there next year, you will see another decrease. And you are limiting the funds that you can bring into this county to tackle what is the unknown, the contingency liabilities that you just don't know about. Or more importantly, that second tier of employees that need to be compensated adequately. So that's in a nutshell, my proposal. Dale's certainly does achieve almost 90% of what, what I would say my proposal achieves. And I would say the major difference is the cushion that it provides for next year. And is there anything that sort of sticks out at you that's markedly different that you might want to acknowledge or bring up?
Not markedly different, but we have to realize that next year, we will have the 3.5% revenue cap. And if you try to, and you need to try to find out where your target value is to where your actual value is. And once you get there, if you're a large amount of money away from your target at 3.5, it gets harder to get to your level. It's going to take a lot more years than would if we didn't have that and we try to, try to build up the reserves now. Could we support the 31308? Most definitely. It'll bring a little bit more money, but as a discussion we have. My proposal right now is to do the one cent because I know that's what I need to cover the cost and still have a little bit on the plus side. But we need to make sure we continue to build the fund balance in a way to reach our target level and find the funds to do that. And yes, right now, the numbers I'm giving you are really rough estimates. It could be a lot more than, it could be a lot less. We have to see the number, how it goes.
And also, this, the proposal that I have still runs the budget at 95%, which is within the parameters. Let me address, what is, what is, so we could answer your concern. Did that address your concern?
No, it did not.
Okay.
A couple of questions I do have, and I'm looking at just, since records management department. And
What level is that? Are you looking at a particular sheet?
Yeah, I am looking, it's 12-1. And these are the proposed reclassifications.
Okay, so the reclassifications are not a part of our, this pay schedule, A or B here? Let me see.
They submit this and at first it was recommended, but after we went through the scenario, what we talked about.
You're looking at an old budget.
1470 was completely eliminated. They did not get any reclassification at all.
That's not the revised, you're Well, it's for, it's for consideration probably because it was a proposed. But under our pay schedule, Julie, is that correct? Under our proposal, the one that I just went over, pay grades, the reclassifications are handled within the pay grades 11 through 18.
And 1470 was not changed. They're still at the base level what they are showing at the very first. So we saw the records clerk at a pay group 14, your records, your manager supervisor at 33, and your senior clerk at 17, they did not get any adjustments.
So they don't get adjustments. What, if they happen to be in this pay scale, 11 through 17, then they're going to get adjusted.
Now, after we went through this process with this, they are not included.
So I guess my question is, then if they're in a pay scale in the pay group where they will get a raise.
Yes.
Is it before or after they're reclassified, or they're not going to be reclassified at all?
They're not reclassified.
None of these are gonna
They're not reclassified.
As they're getting
Will this include, sorry, will this include all the employees in the county?
Yes.
Yes. 273 people meet 11 through 17, that's my recollection. Now, what is important to note that you don't know, and I think it's important to share, is that records management is a unique animal, one of which we've actually have a separate plan just for records management because it's so unique. They're in a building that we think they shouldn't be in because it's too big. They absolutely need digitization and the district clerk and I, she actually has somebody that you recommended co-file. And she's already working on that type of proposal. And then one of the advantages to our program is that, let's say we needed to reduce this group in quantity. They would be able to apply for open positions that are budgeted positions within our county. Because we don't believe, once we digitize and modernize, that we would need 14 people over there. That is just not probably appropriate. So records management in general needs an overhaul, and I think all of us know it, understand it. And part of the beauty of this pay model that Dale and Julie and I have kind of, and Ernest kind of have tossed around is that it allows the flexibility to say, we want to reorganize records management. And, but that doesn't mean that you would be out of a job. It means you could come into the county at a, at a level that would get you, you know, if you want a job, there might be one for you.
So what is the point of this, Paige? It was
Tell me, forgive me, but tell me what, how is it referred? Is it 11-1 at the bottom?
That was the original recommendations. I was going through to show you kind of what was there. But I was going through to say which ones we were not going to be doing. 1470 is one of the ones we will not be doing as any change whatsoever.
But it's recommended.
It was at the time, not anymore.
So it was recommended before today.
My recommendation.
We could go through the new
Recommended on the 12th, but it's not recommended now. That's what I'm asking.
Not recommended at all.
Okay, okay. Yeah. There were only a couple of that were truly like back and forth. And those had to do with whether we should have one or two HVAC mechanical systems techs. I proposed one. Whether or not we should have emergency management admin secretary. We proposed it, knowing that it could be a, what we're calling a floater, for the lack of a better word. In other words, that administrative person could handle multiple departments. And then the last one was if it's the will and it's going to be my proposal to raise the fees, that, that we wait one year for the constable precinct two, only so that the revenue would be there to substantiate a new constable. In other words, patience is a virtue right now, but raising the fees is absolutely imperative because it's commensurate with what other counties are doing. And that would give us just enough time to put one year worth of fees in. And then it would make perfect sense to add another constable in that budget for fiscal year 2021. Those were the ones that were, in my mind, question marked. The others, if you'll look from the top to the bottom, were recommended in the auditors and recommended in mine. The only thing you should probably know is that, it's not even on here, but there were originally extra sheriff's deputies for mental health purposes. Those are being, they're being proposed, but that, they're being absorbed by the hospital district's budget on a reimbursement provision.
When I had spoken to Julie and I had discussed reclassifying one of my employees, my secretary position, because I can't find anyone at part-time. And she said that she had recommended it, but then Dale
What level do you remember is she at?
I can't remember. To a full-time.
Right, so it's not necessarily, well, that we could recommend a part-time to a full-time. That's not going to move the needle here. I think what's important is whether or not it's the will of the court to do 11 through 17 this year and whether next year we tackle 18 to 28. And again, it sounds like, wow, that's a lot next year, but it's just population determinative. In other words, if, like the first group is a million six, it's just a lot, it's heavy because we're heavy on the low end. But when you go to the middle next year, that affects all your court managers, all your 18 to 28s. And that would be handled next year at a much lower cost to the county, probably, I don't know why in my mind I've got 400,000.
Well, originally it was from 11 to 21, so it wasn't quite going to 28. So the number of employees within that range are very small.
Very small. So you could tackle a lot of people that requested reclassifications this year, next year. And really say, this year, we're going to do the bulk of it because it's the most expensive. Then next year, you would ease into the middle section. And then finally, you would tackle the professionals in the third year. And we think that proposal is a strong proposal because it can be justified by keeping your tax rate and then your overall tax rate goes down. I mean, I don't know about you, but I've never baked a cake that's that delicious. I mean, that is absolutely the biggest win that I can come up with. And I have to thank a lot of creative minds in this county. Namely, you know, HR really put a lot of, a lot of power here, and so did the auditor's office. The auditor is proposing the lower rate because it accomplishes what he needs. That's his job, but it's my job to make certain that we're making a major investment in our county. And there's only one way to do that, and that's to get people out of poverty. In addition, there was some concern, how would that affect their entitlements if they had entitlements? And I want you to know that we've started to tackle that issue as it applies to health insurance by seeking information and programs that could be available for their families if they fall in what's called the gap. Not available for, not eligible for Medicaid, but eligible, or CHIPS, but eligible for other types of networks. And those exist in our community. So even though that's not necessarily our, we don't have to do that, we're going above and beyond. So I think it's really, I think that's really what the workshop was to be able to delve into is
I just need to make sure direction on, if this is the general discussion of how everybody feels, that way I can start putting the proposed budget book together. So I can have something to present for y'all to review before we have to vote on it on the 28th.
I, if I can. I think what you did, and let me, I come from the position of being on this court for my fifth year and have never voted for any kind of tax increase. So coming, for me to come off that position and even consider is not an easy consideration for me. I said for the first four years, that's what I would do. I've done that. I still feel very much the need to be as fiscally responsible as everybody else on this court does. And we all have different ways of looking at that. I don't, with respect, I can't, I can't get to the point of the judge's recommendation. I have the possibility of getting to the point of your recommendation because we're not just going for that extra cushion. We're still accomplishing everything this court has tried to accomplish within reason with your proposal. And that's the only reason I'm even trying to, I'm even trying to get comfortable with coming off my very hard-line position. Because I don't want to just sit here and be hard-lined and not be reasonable. Because I understand it costs money to increase the lower-end people. I understand it, and it costs money to pay for the law enforcement agreement. I understand it. I mean, I get all that. And I think, and I've spent four years scouring this budget for cuts. And I've still got some suggestion ones to make when we get to the budget, and it may or not, may or may not pass. But I think this court has done a remarkable job of being extremely responsible. And I'm running out of even ways to cut things, right? And I'm pretty good at coming up with stuff like that. I'm running out of ways to do that. Or there, is there some fat in there? Yeah, but not enough to where it's going to make a couple of million dollars worth of, you know, I might be able to come up with a couple hundred thousand now, you know, whereas in the past, I've made suggestions for a couple million. So and I get, if I got to vote it, I get to vote it. That's the way it goes. I mean, I don't, it's nothing personal. I just, I can't with respect, support the judge's proposal. I have the possibility, because I think you've done everything this court has tried to accomplish and been extremely creative and responsible. And to do it just for a cushion and just because we're looking at a 3.5%, I can't get there. So I'm just one person, I'm trying to get to yours because I really, and I think it's important to note too, the law enforcement agreement goes down next year. We don't have to come up with an extra million. We're not looking at a million for a living increase next year. We're not looking at, you know, I would still like to revisit this 3% every three-year deal. I don't think that's a fair thing, you know, that should be in there. I think if we're going to raise the employees, we've got to raise the employees. And it shouldn't just be a certain segment every three years. I don't think that's fair. So there are things that could come out, that could go down for next year that we may be able to still do what we want to do within the revenue caps next year. And I think that needs to be pointed out. We loaded this law enforcement labor agreement for a reason, because we knew we were going to have problems next year. But that goes down. We, we're looking at doing this big, you know, big meaning dollar-wise increase for employees below 30,000 because one, it's the right thing to do and because we have revenue caps next year. But, but we've got some big items that are going to come out of this, you know, next year. So I think going for too much cushion just because we have a revenue cap, and maybe it's not just, but that's, that's the prime reason that she's articulated it. And I don't, and I don't think it's wrong. I think in any, you know, what's wrong is what they're doing in Travis County. What's wrong is what they're doing in Barrett County. What's wrong is what they're doing in Harris County. So what the judge's proposed is not wrong, it's just too much for me. So
I totally understand.
And that's all, and so I just want to, you know, I'm trying to get off, I'm trying to come from a point of nothing to get my head around voting for something that is very, very difficult for me to do philosophically. But I don't want to be a hard case and not look at it. And I think Dale, you've come up with a budget that addresses not every single solitary thing, but a gosh darn heck of a lot. And still reduce the tax rate. That, to me, is something that I'm trying to be able to get my hands on.
Right. And it reduces the tax rate from last year. But it's really important for everyone to remember that the effective does not even get you
I get it.
what your budget challenges present to you.
And I'm not talking
Yeah. No, I know. I'm just saying.
But that's where I normally start from.
Right. That's what I'm saying. That's where you normally start.
So understand from where I've come, which is difficult for me and my constituency. But I'm just, you're asking, looking for consensus. I'm just rendering mine. I can't, I cannot get as good a proposal as is to the judge's budget. I'm really trying to get to Dale's.
Understood. Commissioner Gonzalez?
No, I have a couple of questions. If we do yours, Dale, what's your balance? What would be your balance in the reserve? And what would be the balance on the judges?
Okay, if we put some numbers in at the balance we have, I would see for the, for the judges would be around about a million 25. And for mine, it'd be 685,000.
Okay, that's, that's the same, but in the, in the what do you call it? The balance of the 20% or 23,000?
Eighty-five? Pardon?
Eighty-five?
685,000, roughly.
So what, and what would be your balance, you know, on the reserve? Like, would be a 20, 23, 24, 22?
At the other rate, it'd be 20, a little over 23.
On yours?
Yes.
And the judges?
Twenty-four.
Okay. Now, my question that I have also is this, if we're not going to do any of the reclassifications, right? right?
Well, I've still have some reclassification in, because we're still going to add some, some, some of the reclassification that was there, and all the reclassifications that, that I have put in was I'm, I'm increasing the, your, your, your assistance up a little bit, including the judge's executive secretary. I've done a little bit for my staff, and a little bit for the district courts and county courts, but everything else is left out.
But if we, I'm saying, if we do that, you say we left out all the reclassifications, and we do a 3.5 across the board, I mean, everybody gets a little more money. I'm just saying, I mean, and I don't know what the difference would be, because I'm not really, but. I'm, I'm just not sure.
So it's the same.
On the. I just, I just think if, if next year we're looking at, and I think, there's nothing wrong with the cushion, I mean, there's something that, because that's only gonna, you got money you're gonna work with, I mean.
It costs about 400,000, so we would use up, most of that, still have a little bit left over, so. If I go three and a half, but I, I don't know the amount of reductions of, of the reclassification just yet, assume 200,000, so it'd be a total of two, 250 increase above that, so I cut my 500,000 in half, or 600,000 in half, so it'd be closer to 300,000 increase at the rate of one, one cent above the effective rate.
We can do 3.9, 3.5.
If I, if I redo some of the reclassification, yes.
I mean, that's something that I probably would wanna see, I don't.
If, if what? If the, the COLA?
Yeah, COLA, I mean, I'm just saying, this is because.
The problem is.
I don't know what's gonna happen, I know we're talking about it could happen, could not happen, I'm just saying if we can do it now, we.
But your COLA should not be, you should not have, and just so you know, COLAs exist, it's not raises, they're, they're really meant, like, if you live in.
Cost of living, but I mean.
Right.
Do we have to call it COLA? Okay, what can be a raise, what can it be a raise?
Well, that's different, you can call it that, but you, you can't call it a COLA and go above.
Four and five, I mean, I just, it's a raise to me, right, I mean, whatever.
I just, okay, so what about Commissioner Modest? How do you feel about this COLA budget, what we just talked about?
You know, for me, I mean, we definitely need to, to look at, you know, cost of living, that should be a regular item. I mean, our policy, I think, works well, every three years, you're looking at at least getting some sort of bump, if the court doesn't take any other action. I, I know there's some benefits, obviously, if we take a different route, if we combine it all at once, but for me, I, I, I believe that we should keep a, a steady increase of salaries, because we're never gonna catch up. I, I do want to see if there's any areas that we can try to cut to bring down even just a bit what the proposal is, but Judge, I, I agree with a lot of what you're saying as far as if we're gonna do it in a year, we gotta do it now, and it's not because we just want to spend money or use it, it's because we have to. If we don't use it now, then we're gonna be stuck in the same boat we had the last 12 years, which is not, not, we're not gonna be able to afford a lot of these pay raises, and a lot of these requests that are coming up. Can we be more mindful of how we deal with these requests? I definitely agree. I mean, are there some positions that need us to hold off, and we'll do it in year two or year three? I, I agree, I believe we need to do that, I think there should be a study to see what, you know, those professional jobs, you know, how do we get them to where they should be based on industry standard in private sector and public sector? But I, I do wanna see a cost of living increase that, that at least gives some, some sort of benefit to the employee, whether it be 2%, 3.5, whatever it is, maybe something in between, wherever that we can, we can find that we're still being responsible, and I, and I think we are, I think we're hearing what the public is saying, we know that we're all concerned about what's impacting our pocketbook, but also in running the county, we know that there is a cost, there is a built-in cost every time that we lose staff, every time that we can't retain people, we're losing that talent that is so difficult to replace, and so I think, you know, if any year, this is the year that we move forward to try to, to bring our numbers up. I definitely think we, you know, with a 30,000 a year as the bottom line, and move up from there is, is where we should be, but Judge, overall, I, I agree somewhere closer to you, but I, I hear Commissioner Chesney's concerns, and I hear what Commissioner Gonzalez has brought up, so I know we're trying to work this all out now, so that when we get to the actual vote, we will have worked this all out, but, you know, after looking at the last two years, we know it's gonna be a lot of motions and a lot of give and take, back and forth between some of these issues, but to be able to bring on more than just a majority of the court, possibly all of the court, is something we can't ignore, we can't. We have to look at, you know, if we're gonna take any steps to where we are being mindful of the budget, but also that we can bring on the entire court to support it, we gotta look at that, because I think that that would speak volumes to the community, if there's any rumblings as far as what actions we've taken on the budget. So that, that's where I'm gonna be coming from as well, but Judge, I, I agree with a lot of what you're saying, you're the one that's, that's in this every day, you're, you're looking at, you've come up with a lot of ideas and suggestions, as many of us have, but to look at, is this year a better year for us? Yes. I hear what they're saying as far as collective bargaining won't be there next year and other items, that is something worth considering, but the caps, what scares me next year, and, and we can't predict, I mean, we can project, but we can't always accurately predict, and so we gotta act with what we know, what we have now, and so that's kind of where I'm at.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Well, I'm having a real struggle over here. I am really conservative, and here's what my problem is, is I'm looking at this, we're thinking we're gonna take 6.4 million in, bring revenue in, correct? That's what we're thinking. How much of that is new evaluations and the increased evaluations against the taxpayers?
New properties, two, two million.
Two million, and the rest of it, you know, we can say we're not raising taxes, but the taxpayer's gonna pay more money next year, and we have no control over the evaluations, that bothers me, and it bothers me that we're gonna spend almost every penny that, that we're gonna take in with the proposals that we've got. And, and I wanna be able to tell my constituents, hey, look, here's what you're getting, you're getting new roads, you're getting your drainage fixed, I'm not seeing any of that, and so I can't just justify doing something just so we can give raises. I am for giving raises for the people that are under the poverty level, I think it's terrible, and, and I think what's happened, and, and I'm not criticizing anybody, but we're trying to do things all at one time, I just don't see us doing that, and it's from past, the past, and I appreciate the court trying to keep things lower, but we're kinda in the situation the city is. The city was what I went on in 2014, everything was ignored, and now it's all in our lap, and we have to do something, I know that, but I, I'm, Judge, I'm really having a struggle here, because I, I wanna be able to tell my taxpayers, I'm giving them something, other than just we're giving employee raises. I'm having trouble with looking here at the percentage of raises that we're giving, and you know, the public doesn't always get a 10% raise, they just don't, reality guides, they don't, if companies aren't doing well, they don't, but, and we're not doing well, but yet we're gonna give, even to our assistants, why don't you give a 5% instead of a 10%? You've got, we've got 16 down, they've got 27% to the administrations clerk, we're trying to get them up, we don't have to give it all at one time, and then I'm having trouble over here with the grants. I mean, we're asking to give them, one, a 70, almost $8,000 raise for the year, another 12,000. We don't have to give all this at one time, you've gotta be able to give something as you go, you don't just give it away. Those are big raises for the year. I, I don't understand why we're just ignoring that, so I, I'm having a, I'm having a hard time with both of them right now.
So, so I need to, I need you to make some clarifications. On, on the grants, remember what we just talked about would be the pay increases, the grants would not be a part of that, on, on the deputy, she would have a, a, well, actually, there would be a, she would get a raise, because her title would be different, she would be, she would come into the deputy, but her, her position would not be, in other words, she would not be addressed until the second phase of the plan, which is year two, but let me go, you, you asked an important question, you need to know the answer, your overall tax rate for Nwasis County would go down next year, I mean, sorry, this year as opposed to last year. So when you're talking about growth, growth always, if your home gets appraised higher, you're gonna pay more taxes no matter what.
I know, but it's a shame.
Right, but, but it's, but you get that back, because the value of your home is increased when you go to sell it, it's not always a negative. In this case, you're, you had 2.3 billion dollars worth of overall growth, 1.2 billion of that, I'm sorry, yes, 1.2 billion of it was new construction, so that's a good ratio to know that you're not burdening the taxpayer as much, because your growth is in the right sectors. When you, if you really wanna know what it means, if, not even including, if you wanna know what the exact .313088 means to your taxpayer, it means 14 dollars more or less per every 100 dollars increased, if you saw the entire 6% appraisal increase. It's gonna vary from person to person. What's most important is this budget does do a lot for the taxpayer, a tremendous amount for the taxpayer, but what we should have done, and we haven't gotten there yet, because the budget is separate, but I will be proposing a certificate of obligation that will address all the needs that this county has infrastructure-wise, and has been ignoring for years, but you can't do that unless you have a staff to administer not only justice, but infrastructure. So you've got to create a, a house that has frames on it. The framework of our house is all off kilter, we do not have a, we don't have a system that encourages people to want to work here at a level of excellence, because they can go to other jurisdictions, or they can go to other areas in our own community and find better work. So in order to get them the roads they need, you have to have people who will work in public works, and that's what, what our problem is, it's no different than administering justice, that's why we went through the collective bargaining agreement. I am sensitive to it, to be honest with you, most smart economists would tell good counties to go to the rollback rate, not because they're looking to hire, have higher taxes, because they know that's the only thing that would insulate them.
Well, we don't wanna do that.
Well, we don't wanna do it, but it, but next year, you have to plan, you can't look at everything through one-year lens, that's why it's so important, that's why I say it's such a delicious cake. I never thought, when I started this process, I would be able to keep tax rates steady and overall lower them, and in addition, make monumental changes to the county. It's absolutely a huge victory to be able to offer this to the county, it's, it's, and it, it doesn't come easy. We looked at every line item by line item, and did a tremendous amount of work reducing the budget. The budget was reduced wholeheartedly, line by line, and there was an actual attempt to really try to even go deeper, but you do, you compromise too much when you do that. The same thing with the COLA, I wanna go to three, to 2.8%, because that's what inflation is, but the money is not there to support that, that's why I had to compromise and go to two. 2.8% is inflation, but 2% is, is what we can afford to do. What is your concern, Kara?
Well, so my concern, again, just to clarify, what was given out by Lisa, that is not your proposal, correct?
Right, today in budget workshop, they're showing what they're proposing. Right.
So, and, and I like what you said about building, building with the pillars, and we want people to work here. Just for an example, when we discuss in purchasing, and this would be on 12 dash one, in purchasing department, they have a senior clerk one, they want to reclassify to a senior clerk two, to put at the 15, the pay group of 15. Now, I am almost certain that I, that their senior two clerk, senior clerk two in purchasing doesn't do the same things that my three senior clerk twos in my office, but they're gonna get paid the same. The job description isn't the same, and that's one thing I wish that y'all would take a look at across the board, when we have a senior clerk two, it's the same, senior clerk two purchasing, senior clerk two in admin, senior clerk two district, tax assessor, my office, and in records management, or records management department that y'all say that you're not gonna do any longer. The job descriptions aren't the same, what they do, it's not the same. Down in purchasing, I'm not sure if they handle money, they don't deal with customers daily, I rate customers, they're not training other senior clerks. So when my, and people in my office, and they look and they say, oh, look, that person purchasing is making the same amount of money that I'm making, and they don't have all the responsibility that we, that they have. So what I asked, well, where can we go from senior clerk two? There's no, that's it, that's a, that's, they hit it, and then you're going up to being a manager. So where, what about my staff? Unless, unless we can do, and I was told by Dale that we couldn't do this, but I see that he did it on his item, first assistant, it wasn't reclassified, so his first assistant at a pay group of 34, and then he moved the first assistant, wasn't reclassified, it's still a first assistant, but just went up a pay group. So can we not do with our senior two clerks, mine, go up a pay group for them? And I, again, I was told by the auditor's office that we couldn't do that, so that's why I didn't ask, because I was told it wasn't allowed, but I see the auditors doing it, so.
And they probably didn't care, they probably did, when you come back and look at everybody that was under 30, everybody came, everybody should have come up, so if yours was making 25, he's gonna come up, if he was making 27, he's gonna come up, if he was making 28, he should have come up. At the end, at the end of the day, when he gives us, I guess, a whole picture of it, every clerk you have that's under 30 is gonna come up.
But.
I mean, you know, we have to, you have to look at the whole picture.
No, they're not on the list here, so they're not, but, but Commissioner Chesney doesn't support this, correct?
So it's however y'all vote. Right, so let, let me just say, we gotta go back to what the premise is. The premise is, is that the idea here is to lift pay grades 11 to 17, if your clerks fall, first of all, let me just agree on the job descriptions, if your job descriptions merit a different pay scale, we need to work with HR department to HR to work on job descriptions. The court is not going to work on job descriptions unless they, like, for me, they're emergency management, they're falling right under my office, okay? For the most part, the job descriptions, I encourage you to go work, is that all right if I say that? I encourage you to go work with HR to change your job description, if you think I've got to have a better job description, because it's, it's causing a, a negative effect.
But not the title, that's the point, so when we put it out, we'll put in the different job description.
Right.
But it's still gonna be a senior clerk two.
Well, no, it depends, you know, if you show it to be a senior three or whatever, then.
There's not a senior three.
Well, I mean, but you don't know, that's why, that's why you get together with her, it could be.
Right, it could, you, it could be anything that you all decide that it is, as long as the court recognizes a pay increase for that title, okay? That's how I see that, that, that gets worked out, but again, the budget here for the guidance that Dale needs is, and look, what I remember distinctly is that you said, hey, I like my budget, I wanna work within the confines of my budget, but that's because you were under an interpretation that you couldn't do anything. What I'm trying to tell you is that under the three-year plan, I wish I had my, my darn board, I like my board.
It's different. The hierarchy of jobs throughout the county.
Right, right, so, so what we decide, what we had to do, when we first started this endeavor, it wasn't easy, because when we first started it, we didn't have a separation, that was our first iteration, we're like, move everybody to 15 dollars an hour as a living wage that's not 15 dollars an hour. That iteration did not work, it didn't work for sure for payroll, for auditing, but more importantly, it doesn't work because you don't have the gap to create supervisor to supervise employee, okay? So the second and third iterations were about, how many people can we actually bring out of the poverty level? Because theoretically, if you believe in trickle-down economics, which I do, that has a real ripple effect when you make more money in a county. The second, the third iteration was, okay, how do we take care of everybody else? Because the phased group is great if you're the phased group, but it's not so good if you're not. But here's the thing, you either buy into the concept that we're trying to create a quality of, of life here for everybody, or you don't, and we can't do it all at once, I would love to do it, and every time you take that tax rate and bring it down, you lessen your ability to affect the most people. What I like about this opportunity is that the legis, growth solved the problem for you, everybody's gonna get a tax rate theoretically. Everybody's going to get a tax rate theoretically under the tax, uh, truth and taxation law. Why do I say that? Well, because we've all agreed as a group that our budget challenges were 4.6. Why didn't Dale start lower? I'll tell you why. Because he doesn't have a choice. Because the budget challenges we all agreed on, we must meet are 4.6 million, way, way above the effective tax rate. So this idea that you're going to protect the taxpayer is a fallacy. You didn't get to protect the taxpayer this year. It just didn't work out. The best that you can do is tell the taxpayer that overall, when I got tough with the hospital district, I protected the taxpayer, period. For those of you that did not hear that budget workshop, ask somebody that was here. They went from proposing a tax increase to not having a tax increase and going to the effective. That is why we have a tax rate that we can say to the taxpayer right now, it's lower than it was last year, and we're going to make certain that everybody services. You don't get service. See, so much of what we get is not tangible. Veteran services. You don't, that's a human being to human being. Social services, human being to human being. Coastal parks, inland parks, those are not revenue builders. So when we talk about what are we giving the taxpayer? We're giving them 30,000 veterans that will have an awesome office. People who are poor in this community who will have ability through social services. The administration of justice in a better way, a reduction, I hope, in jail population through some of our programming, victims assistance. We're giving the taxpayer an amazing, an amazing budget. And you know what I think I, this proves to me is how important it is to write it all down. Because when you, when you look at raises, it seems like that's where everybody's eyes go. But they forget about the opportunities, that, that, the services that these people are providing for the county. And, you know, that's kind of what this budget is, the difference in this budget, is one is lifting more people because it can, because it's got more money, and the other one is doing, is lifting people, but just not as many.
And Judge, I appreciate what you're saying and I get it, but I can assure you the taxpayer is going to say, and that's not your problem, but the taxpayer is not going to say, oh, I appreciate all that stuff because they're going to say, how did it affect my pocketbook? And what did I get with it? What tangible thing can I see that I got? And I, you know, I get it, and, and, and we don't have, and I don't think I understood so much until I got on this court about what we get and what we give, but I just, gosh. They're going to look at how much their values went up, and we, and I know that that's a good thing for the community to a point, but then every year their values go up and they have to pay more taxes, more taxes, and it ticks them off. You know, it ticks them off. It does. And, and we all know that. I don't know what we're going to do.
But when we're low, we are, I mean, we are, you heard it this morning from the Harris County, I mean.
Yeah.
We are so low that, and that's why our profile will allow us to borrow the dollars through certificate of obligation to address our infrastructure needs. This is the right time to do it. I think there's a confusion between the reclassification proposals and what I'm proposing. And that's what we can, Teresa or Cara, I think that's the.
Yeah. And I appreciate Judge, I appreciate all the work y'all, y'all have done in our conversations, and I truly do. And I just want the court to be aware that I was misled by the auditor's office that we were not to put in for any raises for our, for our employees. And I, I don't increase my budget because, again, I was told that y'all were not going, the money wasn't there and y'all were not, it was going to be across the board. So now when I look and I see grants director, a $12,000 raise in all of these raises and reclassifications, I'm stunned because I was told something different by the, not by y'all, but by the auditor's office. So I appreciate the opportunity to voice that, and hopefully, I know we're running out of time, but figure something out because I have a great staff.
Well, just so you know, I, here's the good news. It's not that I didn't listen to what they proposed. That's where my starting block was. But when I took my budget and my budget proposal, I looked at everybody. I said, I'm going to look at the, how can I change everybody's life? I left nobody out, but here was where it might be hurtful because I don't know exactly what pay grades your staff is. If they're in 1117, my proposal helps them this year. If they're in 18 to 28, my proposal will help them next year. If they are professional, um, probably not because, I don't know, but, but it's probably just you as the professional, but then that proposal would be the third year. And that's how I saw that there was a systemic way of getting to it. But in order to say to everybody, how can I make your life better? I spent gazillion hours on health insurance because I knew that affects the bottom line, and I said, I'm going to give you more. And then I spent a ton of time on COLA as a, as a kind of an added, I wasn't thinking it, but I added it because the auditor was really willing to think about COLA. We started at three and a half percent because JAG, that's where he started, and we ended up at two because that's what we could afford. But, um, so everybody got considered. What you're looking at is just sort of one proposal that came out of the auditor's office. The one area that I think looks weird is records management, which I think I, I hope I've addressed. It's going to be treated very, very different and separately. And grants is very weird because if you look at their budget, they're negative 15,000 over last year. That's a very unusual department as well. And, and the reason, the reclassification is they proposed it in their budget proposal shows a lot more than what the auditor gave them.
Well, it all looks weird because my office isn't listed, so it all looks weird to me. And it all looks weird because, again, I was told.
Right. And I'm sorry that that misinterpretation got handled, but I'll tell you, it is not too late. It's not too late until, as they say, the opera sings. And, uh, and so whatever your consideration is, you can get it. But I'm telling you, under my proposal, 11 through 17, if they fit in there, they're being considered.
Push on that.
Unless they're going to be like reclassified as to title, like a part-time to a full-time.
Okay.
Because we're doing that for Maryland's court administration, right?
Under your proposal, Judge, for the 6.4, the.
If you don't mind, Teresa, just because I think, I don't know if they're recording, but could you get by the microphone?
For the, for the living wage group, the original proposal was pay groups 11 through 21.
Correct. That was my second iteration.
And what happens on the proposed reclass list, everybody that fell within that category would come off the reclass list.
Correct.
Anybody that was above the 21 and above would be in the second year.
Correct.
So it looks like it's being proposed still to do these reclassifications this year. And my understanding was the reclassification schedule would go away because they're, they're going to fall in one or the other category.
That's correct. That's correct. But you should see it as, that's, there's sort of versions, right? A and B. And, and that's what Dale's really asking. He's saying, let me give, give me some guidance. Tell me where you want us to go. And I'm not sure we've helped or hurt in that process because I think what the, the struggle, and it's an, it's an ideological one, is whether or not the taxpayer benefits. And I feel like the taxpayer truly benefits from this budget, knowing that we haven't discussed a CO, but the budget can also handle, because we had that workshop with Noe Inahosa, the budget can also handle from the interest and sinking fund, you know, a very strong opportunity to have, you know, 15 projects, if not more, um, dealt with. But you know, your budget runs net neutral for a reason, right? You, if you put roads, your budget, I wish our budget could hold roads and, but you'd have to have a fund balance of 100 million to do that. It just, that, our budget is not meant to tackle infrastructure, heavy, heavy infrastructure. It just, it doesn't. You'd get wiped out in a single blow. It's meant to handle the services and the people that, and the administration, that's why it's called M and O, to do that. Your interest and sinking fund is meant to handle your debt service, and your road fund is so minimal. But just so you know, I want you to tell your taxpayer that, that this county judge proposed the maximum on road fund we could go, which was the rollback, which was $100,000 more. It's like .004, but it's all we could do.
And we're really going to have to reiterate that to the public because.
We will.
Most people don't understand that about the roads. They do not understand that. They think they're paying taxes and all of that should be included in the budget.
You're absolutely right, and that's why maybe John, you had the, the brightest idea of the day when you said, hey, maybe we need to go out and, and tell people what it is that we're doing. It's never too late to get enlightened about all this. Or how about what, when Brent said, hey, the guy says, I'm ready to come buy a house. He says, well, wait till you see our school property taxes. In other words, we're doing our part because we can control our part. We don't control anybody else's. But, um, maybe, um, the 23rd is fast approaching. How is it, how would you like for, to proceed? Are you looking for an opportunity to run with, with one budget or another for printing? And then you want to, as to vote on that? Yes?
What, what I needed, what am I, what, what, this is the plan I'm going to do. I'm going to, uh, do the, uh, positions I told you that was going to be new positions and add the new positions into the budget that, that I talked about earlier. On the reclassification, I'm going to go over there with a fine-tooth comb and eliminate probably all of it. If not all, but there may still be some. I don't know that number yet. Now, for the cost of the, the living balances and as well as bringing the people up to a living, uh, uh, a fair living wage, I'm going to go with, with a proposal we're talking about, including a 2% cost of a living increase for everyone else, and, and that'll address some of the, the numbers that we're talking about. And then, uh, that'll be the numbers I'll put in for payroll. The rest of the numbers are, we've already discussed for expense-wise to, to, I have a good idea of what I'm going to do with that. For the revenue side of it, for the taxes, I'm going to go ahead and propose what I had before as one cent of the effective rate as my proposal for publishing the book. And once we get to, to the, uh, the 28th, that'd be the time where we can make any recommendations of what, what rate we want to go with. But right now, the budget will be at a, at a one cent of the effective rate.
Which is your proposal?
My proposal. And that's what I'll go with at the moment.
And, and you're going to do that because?
He's the county auditor and he puts out the budget.
Right, okay.
He's the budget officer.
Well, but if you're looking for consensus, that doesn't jive with the consensus that I heard.
So that's still, that's only the proposed, that, that proposed, proposed rate can be changed.
Okay.
At any time. I just, I'm trying to prepare something.
Got it.
For everyone to look at so everyone can see where we're at, and then at that point in time.
That's fine.
If we, the court can make a decision on what rate to go with, and it can be up to the proposed rate, and no higher.
Right. And in the meantime, what I'm going to try to do is create a listing of those differences, right? Because you need to see A versus B and start comparison. What you have is almost too many choices, too many iterations of information. And, and we need to make it.
Well, I mean, it sounds like the bottom line is that the, the, the difference is, is the cushion. I mean, I hate to simplify it, but it sounds like the difference here is the cushion. Dale's come up with a budget that has addressed all the things that the judge has addressed, and the difference between the judge's budget and Dale's is the cushion, and that's, that's. No, well, no, I mean, their proposals are very similar.
No, but just so you know, I want to make sure you understand, the way you even get the list started is that each department sends in a request for it, and that's how we start the compilation. And everybody sends in something, and that's how I first see it. And then they come in during budget workshops and get on the mic and tell us why they're substantiating it. We had JP's, we had, uh, DA's, we had, uh, shoot, we had just so many different folks come in. Judges, just different, the sheriffs, um, with every, as many people as you see on the list, they came, and that's how it came. I don't want you to really think that it's cherry pick because it's really not.
Well, I wouldn't say the best are told by the auditor's office. Don't even worry about it because it's not going to happen.
Yeah, well.
Well, okay, let me go back to my question. Is the difference?
Yes.
Is the basic difference the cushion? I mean, y'all have both, I don't see any difference in your proposal and his proposal but the cushion. I mean, tell me if that's wrong because that simplifies it for me pretty easily.
Dale one more time. If, I think that's probably mostly accurate, but it's probably not a bad idea, Dale, to.
Well, just tell me, Dale, is there anything, is there anything other than the cushion that's the difference between yours and, and the judge's budget?
Okay.
And that's, that's, that's an, that's an easy note for me. So I, I, and, and I'm, if I'm outvoted, I'm outvoted, we go down the road. I am more than willing to consider that the auditor's budget very seriously and consider voting yes for that. I'm not willing to consider the judge's budget just for a cushion, just because we want to have a cushion, just because we want to have a cushion. That's, that's the reason we have tax caps because the legislature is concerned.
I mean, that's, that's from your perspective.
I, I just asked the question and the auditor, no, I just asked the question and the auditor answered it, John. That's not my perspective.
That's your opinion.
No, it's his opinion.
So you're saying that those of us that believe that we should have a cushion are doing it just for, because we want to?
Because it's a, because you want the cushion, because of.
Right, but why? Tell me, why would we want a cushion? We want to overtax the taxpayers?
That's not what I said because I, you want a cushion.
You can't put out inflammatory stuff like you've told us before.
How is that inflammatory? I asked him a question, he answered it, John, just because you don't like the answer. Tell me what's not accurate. Tell me.
You're telling me that the cushion, that you're saying that it's just there's some arbitrary thing that we don't really need it?
I'm saying it's a cushion with no, no need right now, other than the cushion to protect against the tax cap.
Well.
That's what this is for.
It's actually a fun balance.
I'm not saying that's inflammatory. There's nothing wrong with that. I said, I just.
Well, listen, let me, let me grab.
Wait, hold on, Judge. Let us have this.
I know, but I don't mind. I just don't want you to.
No, no, but I'm just saying, I asked all these questions. I asked all these questions.
Inside voice.
I asked all these questions, and I don't think, and I said, there's nothing wrong with asking for the cushion. I just can't support it. I, I don't think that's inflammatory. What's inflammatory about that? I don't mean to be inflammatory. I asked him a question. Is this, is the basic budget difference between the two of you the cushion? His answer was yes. Her answer was yes. I just simply said, I can't support it just to do a cushion. That's all I said. How is that inflammatory?
Not a cushion. It may be semantics, but it's not a cushion. It's a fun balance that is a policy decision, looking into the future that we feel is needed.
For what? Tell me what you think it's for. What, what, what for? No, 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 no. That's all in the bond. That's all in the bond, Judge.
Let me just tell you, can I?
It's all in the bond. We're doing, we're doing a huge bond that I support.
I think that, just to answer your question, I think.
We just, but we increased the general fund this year by $2 million. His budget increases it another half million dollars, so we're heading, we're building reserves. We can always say, sure, let's do it for more reserves. But how much do you, how much do you do on the back of the taxpayers? I'm just saying, I am for the first time in my life on this commissioner's court considering voting for something that increases taxes. I can't do it if there's, just for another half a million dollar, or a million dollars in cushion. I'm just, I don't mean that rudely.
Not, okay, and I.
Right terminology.
Right. It, it is for the fun balance purposes, and, and some people have a school of thought that the ratings agencies really take this 25% operating revenue very seriously. And also, the reason the taxpayer should want, whether you want to call it a cushion, and I call it the increase in the fun balance, the taxpayer should care because the 25% is not an arbitrary number. It's based on having sufficient funds in case of catastrophic emergency. And when you run less than 45 days, like we had been running in fiscal year 2017, 2018, that's dangerous.
But Judge, it's the same thing. We can't get it all at once. I mean, we've made progress on the fun balance. We, I agree with you 100%. We've made progress. We, we increased the front balance last year, whether it was smoke and mirrors or not, we still did it to where we increased it by $2 million. And we're going to increase it again under Dale's proposal by another half million dollars, which means we're getting close to 23 or 24%, I believe, under Dale's proposal. And Dale was, had actually more in for the reserves, but he went in and said, you know what? Let's take some back from the reserves and give more to the employees. I'm even okay with that concept, but at some point, there's got to be a give, and I, that's just the point. I'm just saying, that's the point at which I can't give. And, and I mean, I'm not trying to be rude. I'm not trying to be inflammatory. If you took it as such, that wouldn't the case. He's looking for a consensus. He's looking for what people think. I'm just saying, that's not what I can do.
Yeah. And I just believe that I'm kind of looking at a forward, you know.
I get it.
A forward three-year plan, and in order to make sure that I have the funding, I would hate for next year to say, hey, what happened to my three-year plan? Well, you don't have that cushion. Well, why not? Why don't you have that cushion? Well, I don't have that cushion because the cushion wasn't built in. So in a strange way, it might be a budget for fiscal year 1920, but in my mind, it's a three-year budget. It's a three-year budget to make.
But that means, but that means to use that cushion, you have to dip into your reserves, Judge.
No, it, it means that I'm looking at a rate, besides the benefit of having a fun balance, the tax rate being at .310388, that next year, we know that with caps and with expected growth, that rate will come down, and therefore the taxpayer will pay less than they did, unless they just happen to add on to their home or whatever.
But then if you use that cushion, you're dipping into the reserve.
No, but I wouldn't be because the tax rate would not be as low as it would if you used Dale's tax rate. In other words, there's a, there's an incremental differential that happens next year because of three. In other words, there's a, there's an incremental differential that happens next year because of three and a half percent. For example, under Dale's, I think it's a five point five percent increase. Under mine, it's like a six point two nine. And so that percentage, you, let's take the five point five. You can illustrate, well, let's, we'll come up, I'll come up with like an example so you actually can see it. But if you take his five point five, you've busted the cap by two percent. So next year, you won't be able to do that. So if you have incremental regional growth and a lot of new construction, which again, all the prognosticators say we will, you're, you're going to bring in, you're only allowed to bring in three and a half percent over the effective. It's really going to be required to lower your tax rate. There's no way to, to get away with it. So when you do that, you're limiting your ability to say, I have money for next year's twenty-one through twenty-eight, depending on what else comes up. We don't know what else comes up.
You're right. You never know what's going to happen next year. You, you have to be ready for whatever. And look at today. What happened at the uh, the bathrooms or whatever it is, the, the building where you keep the equipment. That, we didn't plan for that. It's going to probably cost us another, what, maybe two hundred thousand dollars to get all that fixed? I mean, th- th- this is what I'm saying. I mean, we've got a.
Two hundred thousand dollars to fix a leak?
I don't know. I mean, I'm just saying.
I don't know.
I mean, you got to tear down the walls, you got to turn on the floors, you know, it's not going to be easy.
But that's why we have bonds. That's why we're talking about a big, huge bond that we're.
Until we get a bond next year?
Dale.
We're talking fifty million in bonds. How much do we need?
The fun balance helps us when we borrow right for the bond. So it is important that it's healthy.
As, as Judge Canales said, the last three times, we've had a, a, a certificate obligation going through there. Uh, even though they, they may not write in there, they quiz us constantly about our fund bounce compared to where our target value is. They, they drill us, they, they may not say that's a, that's a problem. Sometimes they do, but they, the times I've been with, with Judge Neil and Tyler and Steve, and we did a, a review from, from both agencies, they questioned, why is your fund bounce below your, your target?
Well, it's for me to try and help you here. I am not knocking either one of them out. So I would like the differences, like we said, and I know the cushion's part of it, but give me the reasons that she wants it. And I want to look at both of them compared apples to apples. So.
And tell me what the cushion would be used for then in your mind, Dale. How would you, how would you use that cushion? Would it just go into reserves?
It's just reserves.
So in other words, to use that cushion and, and to, 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 to build for that cushion now, which is what we're doing, to build the reserves. If we, the only way to use that cushion then next year would be to dip into the reserves.
Well, there's a lot of things you need to look at too, when, when you talk about next year. We, we, first off, yes, we need to know what the value might be and what the increase in value would be, but, but all increase in value does is just your, just your, your, your effective rate. What we need to try to factor on is the construction of new property. This year was, was very beneficial to the county because we had one point two billion dollars worth of new property. We've been averaging the last three or four years, six hundred to seven hundred million dollars worth of new property. So if you assume another seven hundred, eight hundred million dollars of new property, based on a value and rate, that can bring in another million to two million dollars. Additional revenue that you didn't have taxed before. So that's, we, we need to try to see, we, we need to work with our, our regional economic development teams. We need to work with everybody to try to bring in more development, bring in more.
New.
New equip, new, new, new stuff.
Agreed.
That's where we should focus on. My task would be is try to, to bring enough in there to pay for what our expenses are and try to re, bring enough of, of money in to cover a little bit more of reserve money to bring the fund bounce up. Because I know that the, the rating agencies, they, they drill us every year, why are fund bounces below our, our, our target?
Right. And so my question is though, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand the, the cushion. Like originally, when you made your recommendation, you had, you already had all that cushion in there. But then you took some of that out, I'm assuming because you heard from all the other people. Like, we didn't have a million four to give to all these new raises. I'm assuming you took some of the money out from the, the cushion. So if we really want to talk about reserves and cushion, your original budget had two million dollars worth of cushion in it. Million and a half.
Yes, yes.
You took some of that cushion out and we used it for other things. Oh, no, no. Okay. But, but I'm saying, if we're really concerned about the reserves, then, then we could have done it with your original budget, your original proposal would have built all this cushion back. But, but we just, but somehow it got decided because of what you heard. Okay, the court only wants to go less cushion and, and more help the employees and everything, which is valid. Okay? So that's, that's what reduced your cushion is the court gave you some consensus. So what I'm trying to get to is if we, if we do this cushion with the judge's budget, then we can't use that money without dipping into the reserves next year. Is that a, is that wrong? If I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong. I'm fine with being, you tell me. So in other words, if we budget for this extra nine hundred thousand dollars, right? That goes into reserves. The only way we could use that next year would be to dip, take it out of reserves.
Well, that's assuming you have no new revenue.
No, no, no. I'm assuming we have some new revenue. No, 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 no. I mean, but you're thinking we're going to need this.
You know, I didn't really want to kind of go here, but I think if we get a list, there's a lot of contingency liabilities that I'm very concerned about for this county. Um, I'd like to provide you a list of them. Most of you know them. Okay? They're, they're not new ones. Although there's a couple of newbies, but for the most part, they're, they're real. And even though we take contingency liabilities very seriously, in fact, I think jail upped one line item by a million dollars. Oh, not yet. Okay. There's some real concerns here with valuation. These are the, some of the, the litigation that we've learned about in recent days that also make pa- give me pause. When your limit, when your revenue is, first of all, I think we're, I want to say this, we're a very fiscally responsible county, period. I mean, the, the data.
We're arguing over this means we're physically responsible because they, they rubber stamp it everywhere else.
The data shows this. There's no doubt. The data indicates that. And I respect that. And that's why I try to create change at the same time honoring the fiscal nature of the county. But there's no doubt in my mind having the fun balance as maximum as you can this year, knowing next year, you're not going to be able to contribute much to the fun balance. That's just not going to happen. You're almost doing two for one now. But you are being fiscally responsible because next year, you won't be able to contribute as much if you have any budget challenges that arise. And I would, I would say that that's.
Maybe, Judge, maybe. I still think there's some things coming out of this budget too. Some big things.
Yeah.
I mean, like significant things. I mean, we're not going to have that one point four, it's going to be four hundred. We're not going to have one million. I mean, there's just, there's a couple million that could come out of the budget.
Let me give you an interesting example. And then we can recess if you'd like. But here's an interesting example. I've been bothered for a long time about losing the revenue that was eight hundred thousand dollars from the federal prisoners from the United States Marshal Service that we used to have. Boy, that would be nice right now. I would really like that revenue. And I can even find a way in my mind to finance our way to getting the twenty extra beds. Or to see a successful jail diversion program that we're working on to provide the twenty beds as we normally had it in our own jail. But even if you did that, you would need to have new employees to monitor those prisoners. COs will cover brick and mortar, but they do not cover people. Let me give you another one. Courthouse security. It's absolutely paramount that we get courthouse security. And I know the CO that I want to propose will take care of us on cameras and on control room and, and on technology. But you know what it won't do for us? It won't bring us the people that we need to run that. And I can go on and on. It's, I, I want you to know that we ought to live with this. I know it's tough time-wise, the way we had to redo the budget and Dale's under the gun here. I'm okay with him creating the budget and proposing it. But I'm not going to stop advocating for what I think is in the best interest of the county.
And you should.
And I'm, and I, and I'm going to give you more detail because I think you need more detail. Today is a great example of why we need to keep on hashing it out. You have real concerns and I hear them with my big old ears. And I'm going to make certain that we address them. I'll, I like you, John. I like your idea how nice it would be for once in a blue moon for the county to, citizens to say, man, they all five agreed. It must be a great budget. I wish that that could happen. And I certainly will do everything in my power to address, to address that. But I won't do so with the compromising of what I know, um, or what I believe is in the best interest. So I'll, I'll, I'll give it at that mix. In other words, there might be some things. And then um, for Commissioner Vaughn, I'm going to make sure that I really look for value and also show you where we made major cuts. Because I think that's what you're sensitive to. And for Commissioner Jag, I think I've pushed Dale as hard as I could push on Cola. But if you want me to, I'll go back and, and, and see what his rationale was so that we can present even more detail, what happened to three and a half and why is two appropriate? And then for the county clerk, what I'm going to do is, is work with Julie. I don't really understand your office pay grades because I just don't have them memorized. Let me see how it affects your office, what we've proposed, what it doesn't affect. If there isn't, it, there are very few new positions, but the way we worked it in our minds is we said, tell us what the universe of new positions are, and we tackled those first. Then what we did was we looked at what I call reclassifying limited. That means people that were part-time that are now full-time. There were very few, but you might be one of them. We'll look at those. Again, we'll go back to see what those issues were. But as for, and I don't, although the word raise is accurate, let me end with something that's really important. It's hard to look at it as a raise when you're living before the, below the poverty level, for me. It, to me, it's just unjust. And I don't want to be the leader of a county that doesn't value people enough to say, you should earn a living wage. We did the best we could and kept with the supervisory gaps to create this three-year model. And like I said, I wish we could do more. And the reason I wish we could do more is because when you're earning less than thirty thousand, you live, leave here at five o'clock and you go work another job. Because that's the reality of it. And when we can be the county that hasn't, doesn't have to worry about that anymore, that their budget actually does what we shouldn't, we shouldn't even have to have this discussion because it's automatic. We'll get, we'll get there. We'll start doing that. Dale's, Dale's position is, he wants to get there too. And his proposal does that. Mine, I think, has a few, I mean, it's small, but I want to show them to you. There are very small tweaks. And I think they're limited to the constable, you know, some of those ones that I told you I had question marks by. But at the end of the day, our goal is the same. Lift, lift that bottom group pay grades to a living wage, knowing that next year, we must address as a budget challenge, four hundred thousand dollars worth of needs. The fun balance rises or falls by how well you live by your budget. So one could argue that it's coming out of the fun balance. But remember, every year you increase your fun balance because you've lived within your means or by attrition, all your salaries didn't accumulate. In other words, that's that ninety-five percent. So we want to live within our, we want this budget to be as accurate as possible so that your fun balance increases much more by the cushion. But it's that cushion, if you will, that allows you to address your budget challenges.
And, and Judge, again, let me say, I don't know what exactly I said that set Commissioner Mottis off because I was not trying to be inflammatory. I was simply trying to say, you know, was simply trying to point out that the distinction between the two was the cushion. And I don't think that's a negative. I just think that's what it is because I'm trying to go back and study the budget and simplify it for myself. And that's why I asked the auditor to make sure that I was understanding it right. So if in some way I said something that was, was taken as inflammatory, that was not my intent. I was just trying to express where I came from, what I felt about it, and making sure I wasn't missing anything. That it wasn't just something other than the cushion. And, and, and so maybe I, the tone of my voice or something said it wrong because it was just trying to, to establish. And I don't think anybody's done anything wrong or anybody wants to overtax anybody. I'm just trying to figure out what I can get myself comfortable with. And I think this is a great debate. And I think if they had more of these debates at other bodies, the taxpayers would feel better served, no matter how it comes out. Because unfortunately, I think too many of our bodies rubber stamp things. We don't. We work our butts off in here to make darn sure that every item is looked at, everything is looked at. We respect each other's opinion. And again, if I said something that, that made Commissioner Mottis uncomfortable, that was not my intent. I apologize for that. It was simply just trying to figure out because now I got to go back and really get my head around, you know, what to do and where to go with this. So um, I, I think this has been a great process. And I, I hate, I don't want to end it on a, a note of sourness because I think we've accomplished a ton and we're not done. We've got more to come. And I think it's, I think it's great how much we look at it. And you know, the fact that Dale was able, and, and the judge, but the fact that Dale was able to come up with this kind of budget, with this much stuff in it that we've all talked about for years but couldn't figure out how to do it, that we should be celebrating whatever comes out of this. And hopefully, yeah, we can get to the point where it's a five oh vote on it. And if it's not, it's not. It's not the end of the world. But so I, I'd like to end this on a good note because I think this has been incredibly productive and incredibly positive, other than, you know, the, the, the the tate-tate between myself and Commissioner Mottis was, which again, I apologize for my part in. But I, I think this is, I think we're making great strides. So that's all.
Dale, when you get this ready, can we get it as quick as we can so that we can go over it? And then I, I have one question. Because I'm, I'm really trying to get to a point where I'm comfortable with either one of these. And I guess the question I got is our comment. You know, we all save with our own homes and we save and prepare for years out. So what's the downside of having more of a cushion in the reserve? What's the down, Brent, what's your downsides in that? Because I'm trying to figure out why.
Taxes, just more taxes. On, I mean, it's, it, you know, it's the difference between uh, keeping the tax rate the same and lowering the tax rate. And that's the difference for me is i- it would be easier for me to um, get my head around a budget that I could say to the taxpayer with all honesty and transparency, we were able to do things that were important to this county, but we were still able to lower the tax rate. Not the effective tax rate, but we were able to lower the tax rate. That's just important to me and.
I think it's important to all of us. I really do.
And I'm answering your question. I'm not trying to get them. I'm just saying, that's, you asked me a question, that's, that's where it is for me.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I think we all want to do that. I know I do because I don't, I don't like to raise taxes.
I think we do. And that's, I think, you know, the judge put it perfectly, addressing each of our concerns or areas of focus. So I know that she's going to, you know, continue to look at it. We all need to. Commissioner Chesney and I have this once or twice a year, usually around budget time. So it's not a big deal. We'll be hugging each other afterwards, you know.
Want to go to lunch? I'm starving.
But um, I, I still feel and believe that what we can find, something maybe not exactly what Dale was presenting, but you know, close to that and somewhere in between that, maybe what the judge was presenting. Because I do hear those concerns. I am sensitive to that. I do also hear what Commissioner Vaughn was saying is, is, is right and adjusting to, to bring our workers up, up, you know, at least above the poverty line. But we need to have something real to show for it also. I agree. I agree that, you know, when people say, okay, you managed within your numbers, I agree. We need to do that. But I think that we need to look at this fun balance as not something that's just arbitrary, but something that, that we truly need to have to operate as, as the ability to, because we just can't predict what the next year will happen to us. And God forbid, anything does happen to us seriously with another storm or anything else like that. So my concern is to get us to that number for our bond rating and just so that we're operating in the spirit of being able to function at least for a month, a month and a half. So that's all I support. I will continue to listen to everyone's perspective. And, and I think we're going to still have to move around on, on some of these items when we get to our next meeting. But um, I, my concern is, is that we do have that, that fun balance that we can work on. Now, I think the debate needs to be how much. But if there's a concern it's maybe too much, then let's listen. Let's try to figure it out. So I'm not going to reject any idea that's out there because we do need to show the taxpayers that we are concerned what hits them and also what impacts our employees. But I think that, like what the judge says, we, we got to get our workers to a level where they're not leaving here to have to go to a second or third job because we're not paying them enough.
You know, the bottom line, Dale, thank you for working this budget out. Really appreciate you guys doing the work you did. And the judge too. And I know you guys have been staying here late, working on budgets and working on budgets. But uh, I think we're almost there. I mean, we, you know, we, we come, we come down to two things, yours and the judge's. See what, you know, uh, fun balances are important to me, uh, in the long run. You know, there's always something that's going to happen that we don't expect it to happen. You know, we've been lucky with the insurances also that we haven't had the, the bills that we've had before. You know, who's saying the next year not going to be the same? We, we have to be ready, other than trying to, I would say, we don't, we don't have the money. Um, I want to just thank you, the judge, and everybody else. I worked my own budget. I want to just thank you, the judge, and everybody else. I worked my own budget out. I had three options and I want to thank you for at least looking at it. I didn't, I didn't agree a lot to it, but I want to appreciate you for looking at it, your team and the judge. And my concern has always been for the last, you know, that five years, how do we bring the bottom up? You know, how do you bring the bottom up? You know, and I think, I'm, I'm kind of happy to share the fact that, you know, we, y'all looked at that very seriously, you know, and, and, and I don't think after, probably at the end of, after this year, there won't be nobody under 30,000. You know, maybe it'll be 29, something, but after next year, there, there probably won't be.
That's right. Once you do your continuance.
Once you do, so, you know, that to me is a win. And for, because, you know, we might pay them more, but you get better services. And it's, and the people on the community, when they come here and stand on your window and somebody else's window and somebody's window, and you got employees that are just run up because they're not getting good pay or, you know, working their butts off because, excuse me, their heads off. You know, and, and I think we owe it to them too. If you want to provide the community good services, we have to take care of our employees. You know, so I think this year, to me, that was a win. And I thank you guys for that. The, the classifications, I wasn't too happy with the classifications, as you know that. And across the board, I, I don't know if I, I was, a 3.5 raise and no classifications would have, I mean, to me, I, I'm looking at that and I'm kind of sticking with that. Maybe, maybe I'll change my mind. But I just want to make sure that we be fair to everybody else, you know, that, and some people are doing it for different reasons and I understand that. But we all got jobs here. We all accepted jobs. And you said, this is what, I was going to get paid. And we should, you know, when the races come up, we should get a race, you know, and that. But I just want to say that, that to me, this whole thing, I mean, I mean, and as far as the fund balance, I, I'm always for having more fun. The previous Commissioners Court, the judge was always fighting for more fund balance. I mean, he won in '25 and '26 and we tried to work with him, you know, and most of the time we didn't, you know, because, and the last time we didn't, we could have had a very good fund balance. But we, you know, it was, three of us voted for the, for the, for the race and two voted against the race. So that kind of put us behind, you know? So I, you know, I look at those things too, you know, and I think we're here at this Commissioners Court when we say, you know what, I don't, I don't really want to vote for that. But I'm going to get everything everybody else gets anyway. You know, I think that makes a difference to some of us that we are willing to stick our heads out and say, you know what, I've got, I got to explain to my constituents too, why I voted for it. But if I'm going to, if you're going to get everything that I get, then I think we all should vote for the same thing. You know, I think that, you know, the long run, I mean, I know we promise, we make all kinds of promises. Nobody wants to raise taxes and that's the last thing anybody wants to do. But unfortunately, you know, for us to run this county, sometimes we have to look at it where, hey, you have to get down and dirty and say, you know what, we've got to have this money in reserve. So that's the only thing I got to, I got to say.
Commissioner Vaughn, what I can promise you, my staff and I will go through all of this and digest everything we've, we went through today. And tomorrow, we'll be knee-deep in all this stuff. And I'm going to try to schedule some meetings with, with Judge Canales and go over what I'm putting here and there to do this for whether reclassification or, or maybe a cost of living increase. And our next public hearing is on the 23rd, which is Friday. I probably should have you something formalized at that time to show you exactly where our scenarios are. And we should have something at that time.
And, and I appreciate everybody so much. I just, we do have a adjournment in memory of. So before I really let you go, let me, let me do that. But I did a little math while you all were visiting. And I just want you to, something to ponder and think about as you leave here for lunch. And that is the difference to the taxpayer between my proposal and Dale's proposal to secure the fund balance, and I'm going to show you a few other good rationale later, is 35 cents per $100. I really think that this is a very important thing to understand what you're getting for conservatism. It's really important. I'm all for it. I love it. I want to be conservative. I have to tell you, I've betrayed everything that I really know about being liberal. I am, I'm with you guys 100%. The dollar matters. Every penny matters. And I've been enjoying this bean counting process earnest, very much. And I want to thank and acknowledge Ernest because we spent so many hours on this. But I, I don't know if I told you all this, but my first love was mathematics. I was a math minor in college, engineering major, math minor. I, I was only one course away. I love math. So I let numbers work and tell the tale because liberals like to talk about things and mathematicians like to just display them in the numbers. And, and when I see 35 cents as the difference, to get the comfort that we know the rating agencies need, to make sure the budget challenges are met, I have to tell you that I think that's the most fiscally responsible, conservative thing to do with the dollars. So it's, it's wonderful. I like that we have differencing, difference of opinions. I'm like you. Who needs a rubber stamp? We need to be able to bring different schools of thoughts to this court, and I welcome it. And I hope that next time people are listening, come down and share your opinion. Where was everybody for public hearing? I miss you all. You need to come down here and share your opinions. It's really important and we will treat you with the utmost respect, I assure you. In addition, I plan to get the Del Mar event scheduled. But again, I think you're going to be very surprised. We like to talk about big numbers because they add up. But when you're talking about an individual taxpayer that you're really fighting for, I think I'll be able to show you by the next time we meet, that 35 cents is well worth what we gain. And with that, are there any adjournments in memory of?
Judge, I just have one. Jim Davis, and I've got his obituary in my office. I apologize for not bringing it, but I went to church with Jim for many, many years. And he, he was a resident in Flower Bluff and want to pass on condolences to his family.
Absolutely. Anybody else have any adjournments in memory of? We echo those sentiments to the Davis family and to any other families that are part of our Neises County greater family. If you've lost a loved one, we're thinking of you this afternoon. Gabbling out at 1:34.